Good evening, everyone. Seeing that we have a quorum, I hereby call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 22-12 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water, and that's in parentheses, rate adjustment. And the synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the rates and charges in the Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water to reflect the repeal of the utility's receipt tax in compliance with IC 8-1-2-4.2. This evening, we've asked staff to attend. Mr. Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities, and Mr. Chris Wheeler, Assistant City Attorney. Are you ready to present, sir?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities. And House Bill 1002 repealed something called the utility's receipt tax. This is a small tax that's levied against some of our water revenues. That repeal leads to a reduction in our cost of doing business. It's a tax that we don't have to pay. We should have with us our financial representatives from Crow are also joining us by Zoom. We have Jennifer Wilson here from Crow, and Chris Wheeler from City Legal is also with us tonight over Zoom. So that small reduction in revenue turns into a reduction of about 1.16% in our water rates, which will lead to a small decrease in water bills for our customers. It won't affect sewer, it won't affect the stormwater fee, and it also won't affect our revenues because this is a tax that we collected and simply passed through. And either I or Jennifer would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Now we'll go to the council. Does council have any questions for Mr. Kelson on Ordinance 22-12? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public. If we have any public comments on Ordinance 22-12, we'll take any that might be here in the chambers, as well as we'll check on Zoom. So can you please indicate if we have anyone in the chambers? No, everyone looks like dear friends. Okay, we'll go to Ms. Heather.
Participating via the Zoom platform can let us know that they'd like to speak by using the raised hand function or by sending the meeting host a message in the chat. And I don't have any takers at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go back to council for any final comments or questions. Councilmember Sandberg.
Well, I will just say that I'm happy to support anything that does not affect our revenues and that actually benefits our ratepayers. So thank you, Mr. Kelson.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments from council, do we have a due pass recommendation?
Move to pass.
Thank you. Been properly moved and seconded for due pass. Ordinance 22-12. And just for kicks, we'll start on our right this evening, my right. Councilmember Kate Rosenbarger.
Did you hear that? Yes. I said yes.
Yes. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Scamblary.
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and this council's recommendation is due pass 900. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Volin's not here. I apologize. 800, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is Ordinance 22-13, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022, to provide funds to finance the costs of certain capital improvements, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds, and appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change, preparedness, and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city And the synopsis is, this ordinance approves the issuance of special taxing district bonds by the City of Bloomington Park District under Indiana Code 36-10-4-35 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,800,000 for the purpose of financing longer-term capital projects and investments for park purposes throughout the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District in order to promote climate change preparedness and implement equity and quality of life for all. This evening, we have asked the following staff to appear this evening. Mayor John Hamilton, Mr. Jeff Underwood, Controller, Ms. Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel, and our Bond Counsel and Financial Advisor. Who do we? Oh, we get the pleasure of hearing from the mayor first. Thank you, Mayor. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. It's good to be with you again for considering some very important legislation for our city's future. I will be speaking to you twice tonight, very briefly, to share from the administration a few points. First, about these two bonds under consideration. I know you've introduced one. And then, second, about the local option, income tax, and I really appreciate your attention. You have before you one formally and another soon-to-come five-year bond of just over $5 million. Both those bond ordinances are directly fulfilling commitments that this administration made to the council during last year's budget negotiations, deliberations, and in those deliberations, we committed to bring to you this spring two such ordinances. One focused on general public works-related needs and one focused on parks-related needs. Both lists of potential projects in the bonds derive from a similar two-step process. First, reviewing city plans, including the Comprehensive Plan, Unified Development Ordinance, the Transportation Plan, the High-Priority Bike Network, and Recommended Projects, the Climate Action Plan, the Sustainability Action Plan, the ADA Transition Plan, the Parks Strategic Action Plan, and MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Transportation Improvement Project. And the second step beyond reviewing those plans was developing potential projects from the ground up, city department by city department, reviewing their capacities, needs, and timing, and prioritizing based on a number of factors to assemble potential projects for your consideration. You will shortly hear from City Controller Jeff Underwood, who will provide additional fiscal information related to both bonds, followed by an overview of the process by Corporation Counsel Beth Kate. Please note that Mr. Underwood, Ms. Kate, and I are providing general comments about both bonds being discussed. We won't repeat ourselves for the second ordinance. And for each respective bond ordinance, city staff will then briefly describe the specifics of each project, and will all be available for questions. Two final points from me about the general obligation bonds. First, we are presenting these potential projects to you in priority order as suggestions. We absolutely welcome your view of priorities, as we've welcomed your views about the projects as a whole. We believe they are excellent projects and will advance needed infrastructure in our city plans. And just as a reminder, we will plan to repeat this exercise every five years to sustain a steady and consistent investment in these kinds of projects. And second and last, I'll just say, these are very responsible investments. When we compare Bloomington's overall debt per capita burden with our peer cities in Indiana, we are right in the middle. And passing these ordinances, we remain right in the middle of that list of per capita debt in Indiana cities. Just like responsible households who borrow for a home or an education, we borrow to make investments that pay off through time, that make us stronger, more equitable, more sustainable. And that's what these will do. I thank you for your support, and I'll hand it now to Controller Underwood and Council Kate.
Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Yes, I am alive, and there is somebody behind the mask. In anticipation of tonight's meeting, I went and got my second booster shot, so I'm all shot up, so to speak. Tonight, as the mayor said, we're talking about issuing two different general obligation bonds. The term general obligation means that they are based and backed by property taxes and have their own separate rate. This would authorize us to issue up to $5.8 million with a maximum interest rate of 5% and a repayment of six years. Now, we don't believe that we will need $5.8 million. We don't believe the interest rates will be 5%, and we don't think we'll pay it back over six years. But it does give us flexibility. For those of you who have been here before and we've done bonds, you know that we always set the parameters a little bit higher than what we think. The plan is, though, that we will bond for $5 million in project dollars and that the issuance cost would be on top of that, so hence the $5.8 million. We don't believe we'll need that full amount. As I said, both will be repaid and backed by property tax basis, which gives us the highest rating that we can achieve for a city. We're A-plus, and so we have a very good bond rating, and I expect that we would maintain that even given the pandemic. Each bond will have a rate of about 3.3 cents per bond, and that translates to, if you're assessed, the net assessed value of your home is $50,000. So it's the gross assessed value minus any deductions that you might get. If that's $50,000, would translate for a combined amount of additional $33 a year in property taxes. So $10 million, 33.3 cents, so about $33. In regards to the city, the city general obligation bonds have a statutory 2% debt limit, so we have a maximum amount that we can issue. And that's essentially the city's assessed value divided by three multiplied by 2%. If you do that math, we currently have a limit of about $28 million that we can issue in total. We have about $9 to $10 million outstanding, so we have an availability of about $18 million. This issue, if you issue it, would take $5 million of that, still leave us around $13 million. So close to half of what our capacity would be. So if we find in the next few years that we have additional debt requirements, we'll be able to tap into that if we want to do it through a general obligation bond. On the Parks Department, it does not have a statutory limit. There's two statutes that Parks Departments can be established under Indiana. Fortunately for us, it was established under the more liberal one, which there are differences between the two, but essentially part of that statute is they don't have a limit. We continue to be a low-debt city. We presented you with information on debt per capita, and you can see when compared to our peers, we're fairly low. Outstanding, as I said, of 1122, Parks had about $14.8 million in general obligations. That's the bicentennial bond that we issued in 2017, and then we issued, renewed a general obligation bond for them as well, and they have about $14.8 million outstanding, which is the majority of their debt. They have one small revenue debt left for the Twin Lakes Rec Center, so they have relatively small debt. As the mayor said, our anticipation is we would do this every five years, but we would have paid off the previous issues. So it would just maintain that 3.3 cent rate for the next issue and the next issue. So this would not be a layering on after the first debt. It would be maintaining that rate with a relatively quick payback period. If we happen to issue the full 5.8, we anticipate we'd pay about $648,000 in interest over that five years, so a total of just under $6.5 million would be the amount that we would anticipate to repay. So quick hitting, again, that's a fairly high interest rate, but we'll get it paid off quickly. With that, I will turn it over to Corporation Counsel Beth Kate. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel. So I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. I'm just going to outline the process with respect to bonds. So as Controller Underwood mentioned, you've got two bond ordinances in front of you. One is with respect to Parks, Parks District Bonds. The other is a general obligation bond for Public Works. The Public Works Bond process is fairly straightforward. You've already had a first reading on April 6th. You're having a discussion with a second reading and a committee of the whole discussion tonight with some public comment. And then there's a public hearing on April 20th, for which notice has already been published, was published on April 8th. The Parks District Bond process is a little bit more involved because it's actually the Board of Parks Commissioners who is also involved in approving that bond issuance in addition to you. So the Board of Parks Commissioners already met back on March 30th. They voted to adopt a declaratory resolution for Parks projects and a preliminary bond resolution and to authorize a public hearing for April 26th, to go back before them for that hearing. And notice of that hearing was given and published also on April 8th. You had a first reading of that on April 6th, and tonight you're having a second reading for this bond issuance and the committee of the whole discussion with public comment. And then you will have the April 20th public hearing for the council, for which notice has been published again April 8th. If you approve the resolution and Ordinance 2214, then the ordinance that you pass goes back to the Board of Parks Commissioners. That is what they will hold their public hearing on, on April 26th, and that is what they will ultimately vote on. So in a nutshell, that's the process. And I will get out of the way and let the first next presenter go.
Thank you, Beth. Adam Wasen, Public Works Director for the City of Bloomington. Thanks for having me tonight. Here to just present on the specifics of the Public Works General Obligation Bond projects. So the first list that we have for you outlines all of the projects in which we're seeking funding for tonight. I'd go through, I had planned to go through all of the different city plans that these projects touched on. I think the mayor did more than a thorough job outlining each of those plans, whether it's sustainability or climate action or transportation. But over the next several slides, I'll just give you a brief overview of each project and that, and also noting that each and every one of these projects in some way hits on multiple city departments. So while I'm presenting the full list, this is a collaborative effort amongst Public Works, planning and transportation, engineering, parks even, and so certainly a collaborative effort. But the first project, the High Street Multi-Use Path and Intersection Modernizations. This has been a project that's been mainly led through planning and transportation and the engineering department to put in additional side paths and other infrastructure improvements on the High Street corridor from Arden up to Third Street. This is a big project and continues our commitment to investments in all modes of transportation. I think it's safe to say that the recent investments we've been making in side path construction across the city have been very well received, whether it's the new projects on Winslow and over up South High Street. Those types of projects are just always well-received and a continued investment in that from the city. The next project, the citywide LED conversion of streetlights. We have about 2,400 streetlights that use the old high-pressure sodium technologies and want to upgrade that to newer LED technologies. This project specifically is mentioned in the Sustainability Action Plan as well as, and would not only be upgrading the entire network of streetlights with current technology, but simultaneously reduces our energy consumption, our carbon footprint, and long-term maintenance costs for upkeep of the lights. This is something that's been on my radar for many years and would be excited to be able to begin implementing that project. The downtown ADA curb ramps improvements would be, again, another continuation of investments that we've been making. I think this would be the fourth phase of ADA ramp improvements throughout the downtown. The pictures that are shown here, just kind of a before and after of the Sixth and Madison intersection and how important those improvements are in the downtown and throughout the city. Sidewalk projects generally, we've been very proud of our investments in not only new sidewalks, as indicated in the Rockport project that has really benefited that neighborhood, but also in our sidewalk repair investments, our sidewalk participation program, and our sidewalk grinding, saw cutting projects. So this would be an effort to prioritize areas throughout the community that are in need of sidewalk construction and provide that additional infrastructure for pedestrians and neighborhoods. Next up, we're looking at some, we'd be looking at energy efficiency retrofits for all of our city buildings. Needless to say, none of our buildings are getting any younger. We, while we're always trying to be good stewards of each and every one of these buildings, the upgrades for energy efficiency, whether with HVAC or roofing improvement, exterior envelope improvements, or other critical components, that's just another step in us being good stewards of these public assets. Next up, the City Fleet Vehicle Hybrid Electrification Fund. Pretty self-explanatory, but this would be to dedicate specific funding to replacing gas-powered vehicles with electric vehicles across the fleet. This is obviously part of not only Sustainability Plan, but the Climate Action Plan, increasing our overall efficiency of the fleet. While we're not able to do that with some of our heavier equipment and larger vehicles, we would look to do this with our passenger-type vehicles and make those improvements. Next up is a program that we've also been identifying for several years, is just working on a more robust GPS program for our city fleet. This is a telematics program that would help us with things like tracking idling across the city, fuel consumption, driving habits, has impacts on many different aspects of what we do in terms of better technologies of letting the residents of the city know maybe where a snowplow is or where the trash truck is, as well as backend benefits for us with cost savings. The next one, again, is a project that's been on our list for many years, and heck, some of the employees that worked on this have gone and retired by now. But this has been something Public Works and Parks has been talking about for many years to help us deal with the green waste that we generate in our operations, whether with the urban forestry program, with the leafing program, with our yard waste program at Fleet. This has become a higher priority. Our access to sites that accept this material has gone, we've lost one of our main suppliers of that service, so a high priority for us as well. The last one I've got is a citywide traffic signal retiming project. I often joke with my wife that if I had a dollar for every time someone brought up a signal timing issue across the city, I could probably retire by now, but we have an aging network of different technologies in our traffic signal system throughout the city. We maintain 83 traffic signals throughout the city, and this would be a signal retiming project in advance of what would we hope to be major investments over the next several years and decades to a more modernized traffic signal network throughout the entire city as part of our smart cities efforts. So those are just high-level overviews of each of the projects listed in the Public Works General Obligation Bond, and I believe that's going to be, this will be the end of presentations for now, and we would be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And since all the bonds will be discussed together, are we going to hear from Ms. McDevitt? No? Okay, no, I'm fine with that. I mean, I just, I know the mayor said he wanted everyone to comment, so we didn't have to do it twice. So, okay. Thank you all for these presentations. Now we will go to council for any council questions, and we'll start on, well, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank you all for your presentations. I have a question probably for Mr. Underwood. So how do these bonds impact people's property tax bills? Is this going to be an additional fraction of a percentage on property taxes, or how does that work?
Yes, Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Yes, it would get its own property tax rate, and it would be approximately 3.3 cents each for each of the bonds. And that translates, if you have a house with a net assessed value of $50,000, so that would be after any deductions, a homestead or mortgage or anything like that. So it's the bottom line, what you get taxed on. That would be about $16.50 for each of the bond issued, so about $33 additional per year.
Okay, thank you. I know you said that, but I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scamblary.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Underwood? So, I just want to stay. I appreciate all that you shared with us in the supporting documents, particularly on debt per capita. Thank you for that. I had a question regarding bonding capacity, though. If I'm understanding this correctly, in the support materials, with these two bonds, we would be at 54% of our capacity, correct?
Two different issues. The Parks Department does not have a statutory limit for general obligation bonds. So when you issue debt, there's two repayment methods, basically. Property tax debt, general obligation, or revenue-based. In the case of the Parks Department, they don't have a statutory limit, so they could issue all the general obligation bonds that you all would authorize, and those would be property tax-based. Obviously, we look at debt per capita and our ability to repay and those types of things. The city, on their general obligation side, not the revenue-based, has a statutory limit of 2% of the one-third of the assessed value. That's about $28 million.
Right.
So of that, we have about $10 million outstanding, issue another five, there's $15 million. We'd have about $13 million left on today's dollars.
So the issue of one bond, and I misspoke on that, the issue of one bond would put us at 54%.
Yes, just the one $5 million one.
And the follow-up question that I was headed toward, how high, I'm assuming we don't ever want to be at 100% of our bonding capacity. Do you have anything on our peer cities or on comparable cities and where they are in their bonding capacity?
Other than what we presented to you, every city's unique in how they issue debt. Some go heavily on revenue-type debt, which, you know, you have a revenue stream that backs that up. So like tax financing is one that we've used. All of the utility debt is revenue-based. So we're really looking at what's the ability of the community to bear. So that's why we look at the debt per capita, which combines all the debt. That includes leases, so a couple of our garages are leased payments. So we think that's a fairly comparable value for us so that it doesn't really necessarily matter which type of debt people issue, it's what's the total to bear.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Wasen, but I'll wait till the second round. Sorry.
Councilmember Rallo.
So just, I had a similar question as Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and just for clarification, so you're estimating a $33 increase in property taxes for a $50,000 assessed value?
Net assessed value.
Net assessed value.
Yes. So you may have a house that assesses at $150,000, but you have a combination of deductions that would get it down to 50. So when I say it's the net taxable assessed value.
All right. And so what would, this seems inconceivable right now, but suppose assessed values were to fall, what would be the effect?
The tax rate would go up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You've got to remember, there are two, there are two components of your tax rate. There's the levy, and there's assessed value. If your increase in your assessed value is higher, a higher rate than the increase of your levy, your tax rate will go down. If they grow the same, so if they both went up 3%, your tax rate would stay the same. If your AV goes down, your levy goes up, your rate's going to go up.
Okay, so taxes would go up if assessed value were to go down, and if, and what would be the effect on the bonding capacity? It would lessen our bonding capacity as well.
Absolutely, yeah, because it's a factor of your assessed value.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, for Mr. Wason. I had a question about the signal re-timing project that you mentioned. Forgive me, I'm fuzzy on the details. I remember during last year's budget presentations, there was discussion of a goal that maybe had been delayed by a year of assessing the city's traffic signals for accessibility purposes as well, and some sort of comprehensive review of those. I had brought up a question that I'd run into with some constituents around an accessibility issue in terms of audible signals, and I was wondering if anything like that, other ancillary benefits besides timing and sort of upgrade, would, would those types of benefits be included in this re, you know, what was framed as a re-timing project?
I'm going to defer to Andrew on that specific question, but I will tell you, we are currently in that assessment phase right now, and are working with the Community Council on Accessibility on some very specific locations for improvements, but Andrew, you want to take the rest?
Sure. Andrew Seabor, City Engineer. So this, a part of this project would be to re-inventory all the technology that's been gradually upgraded, all the intersections, and where there have been technological advancements, we would make sure that the, the timing parameters are also updated to reflect things. So a component of re-timing projects from an accessibility perspective would be to make sure that we're providing appropriate, like, walk time and don't-walk time, to make sure people that move at certain speeds can cross, and so that would be an example of how this would benefit accessibility issues.
Thank you for that one, and that example, and then on the, the audible signals, where those don't exist now, would that be part of that as well, sorry?
This project would assess what we, where we currently stand, but a part of it would not be actually changing the physical infrastructure, it would be more making use of what we already have in place.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further first-round questions from council members? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Sims. I was going to ask Mr. Wason a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Adam, Mr. Wason. When LED conversions happen, and the vehicle replacement, so in both those cases, the question that came up in my mind is, will the, like, the lights and/or the vehicles, they will be replaced in wholesale, or as the lights burn out in, you know, along the street, then they're replaced, and when the vehicle reaches the, you know, age that you need to trade it in, or whatever, is that, is that then when you go to a new vehicle that's, you know, electric or hybrid?
Sure, I can hit on both those topics. So the citywide LED conversion plan would be a three-year plan to do about a third of the 24, 20, I think we're about 2,400 lights where we would look for conversion at this point. That would be about a three, that would be a three-year plan to replace all of those high-pressure sodium lights that are currently in the inventory. And then with vehicles, you know, no, it wouldn't just be a wholesale replacement of passenger vehicles. What we would be doing is looking at, you know, at the older vehicles in the fleet that, that are ready for replacement, we'd be looking at some of our less fuel-efficient vehicles first, so we would, we would do a full evaluation of, you know, exactly which vehicles we would target. We've got a good idea of what that is right now, but we'd finalize that analysis, but no, we wouldn't be replacing vehicles we bought last year that were, you know, decently fuel-efficient and things like that. We'd be looking at the older part of our inventory to upgrade those. For example, we've got, for our pool, we've, we've got what we call the pool of vehicles that are available to city staff members that may have a meeting out of town, or, you know, across town, and they need to utilize a city vehicle. So we have a couple, we have several older Ford Fusion hybrids, I think they're 2006s, so some of the really original hybrid technologies that came out, they've served us well, but they're getting towards end of life. Those are the types of vehicles we'd identify right away. You know, if I could get 50 Ford Ranger electric trucks next year, I would love that, it's, it's not going to be possible, but, you know, so we'd start, you know, with that evaluation and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Wason.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that we were, I knew, I knew that was probably going to be the answer, but I had to make sure I knew that, thank you.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Thank you. Any further first-round questions from council? Seeing none, we'll now go to second, second round questions. Yeah, first, and we'll start with Councilmember Scamblerie, and then Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wason. I, I think I mentioned this last week, but I'm, like all my colleagues, take seriously the ways in which we spend our own money, but I like spending other people's money, too, so I appreciate all the hard work you've done to identify match funds. Could you talk a little bit about your strategy and how you go about doing that, and what other sources? I've, I've noted ARPA and MPO money, and CDBG money as potentials. Are there others that are not necessarily reflected here, you want us to be aware of?
Well, you know, we, we really don't have a great idea of exactly what's coming out with federal dollars yet. We've gotten some early indications, but obviously that'll be some of the really big pools of money that we might look to in the next couple of years. You know, I know with, like, the High Street Side Path project we list, possible, and that's a project that's not fully Public Works, but I know we listed, that would be part of the federal funds through, I believe, the MPO that we would look to there, you know, with, like, LED conversion, there possibly could be some grant funds to also leverage. You know, so we're always going to be continuing to explore those, but I think the biggest opportunity is probably that larger pool of federal dollars that are going to be coming out.
And are there increments in which we'll know more about that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And when might that be?
Oh, well, hopefully, we start getting some information in the next month or so.
Beth, is that probably fair with where some of the federal stuff, like, as far as where the pools of money will be landing on?
Yeah, okay. We're actively working with, you know, representatives that are in DC to identify that, and that's been ongoing for the last several months, so I would hope we could start getting information on the specific pools of funding that are going to be coming available sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Glad you're there, Mr. Wason?
Yes, sir.
Because I'll direct a few to you now. So I've got a couple, but one thing I'd like to see is, I mean, some of these are going to increase quality of life, so there's a quality aspect. There are some that have a quantity aspect in terms of return on investment, and I wonder if we could have that information provided. For instance, if you invest in electric vehicles, it's good for climate, potentially, I mean, it's going to probably be charging from coal burning, but in any case, it's, you know, I think we've decided that's the way to go, especially if we can increase solar capacity. But anyway, could, could, could we have some sort of estimation on return on investment of some of these investments, say, in energy cost savings?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, just on the LEDs in particular, I've got some information here in front of me on, you know, like, the carbon footprint reductions, you know, we can look at the overall cost savings over time, the reduction in annual maintenance on an LED bulb compared to, or annual maintenance on the LEDs compared to the high-pressure sodium, but I can put a little synopsis of that together for the council and pass that along.
Great, and just one other quick note, I brought this up with Mayor Hamilton, but I, I think it's, it's important, and that is, you know, we like to think of LEDs as good for the environment, but apparently, certain frequencies of light are ecologically bad for insects, and are we paying mind to that?
We are, since that's been brought up, I've been trying to really get, dig in deep on the research and such, but yeah, we've got, we're certainly considering that, and the, the spectrum of the color of the light and things like that, so trying to make sure we're, we're cognizant of that as we would move forward.
I think there was a study out of UCLA or something, but anyway, you, you have that information at hand, so that's great.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, for Mr. Wason, and again, I actually had some similar questions about LEDs, which it might just be better served to hear that, or to see in the information you're going to provide, Mr. Wason, but do, do you have, like, a simple figure of, like, annual, or the lifetime, it's like an annualized life, you know, an annualized cost of LEDs as compared to sodium? Like, are we talking about, you know, costs, like, what are the cost savings like, what is the payback time period like? If you don't have those numbers, that's okay.
We can certainly provide, it's, I've got that information in the document here, it'll take me just a moment, but absolutely, we can provide that. So maintenance cost on a 100-watt high-pressure sodium tends to average around 564 a month, whereas the 70-watt LEDs are around 278 a month, so, you know, just under half. So that's just on annual maintenance costs, or that's on the maintenance costs. In terms of, like, the LEDs have a 50,000-hour burn, how do you, I don't know, they have, the LED, lifespan of the LED fixture is a 50,000 burn hour compared with an, a high-pressure sodium of being a 24,000, so we'll put together a good synopsis of these, these types of things, the cost savings, the carbon footprint, and such, and get that over to the council.
Okay, thanks, and the energy cost savings like?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosa Barker.
Hi, thanks, this is for Mr. Wason. It's about the green waste yard. Where would that be at the park, and then where do we take the green waste now?
Yep, so right now, we've identified a site on Old State Road 37, north of Clubhouse Drive, on the west side of Old 37, so between basically the ball fields and Clubhouse Drive there, there's a, there's a couple, I think it's about a couple-acre lot, and so that's the, that's the spot that's been identified, and about three years ago, we did an initial study on that site to kind of, to put together a general footprint of what we would expect. The urgency, or where we've been currently taking our yard waste was, shoot, I always mix up Green Earth and Good Earth, there's two companies, but it was a company out near, near the airport, but they've ceased their operations, and the other option is not, they, they're not an option, they're not willing to accept our waste at this time, our yard waste at this time. And I'll just make one other quick point there, we are actively investigating and working with some other possible partners on, on disposal of green waste through both sanitation and the leafing program. This site's very specific, is very much going to be initially used for the urban forestry type program, so.
Are you good, Councilmember Rosa? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. This is for Mr. Underwood. The slight increase in property taxes that these bonds would bring, would that, do you predict that that will bring more property owners to the property tax cap, and therefore increase our so-called expenses for property tax caps?
Not really, given it's $10 million, I don't think that it'll really impact it much. We haven't seen a slowdown in the assessed value, so as long as assessed value continues to grow, it, those caps move, so we've actually seen a slight reduction, if you'll remember, when we first presented property tax caps, they were about $1.2 million, and they were about half of that for 2022, they were about $600,000.
So if AV continues to grow, then we shouldn't see an increase in our caps?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's generally speaking, you know?
Generally.
Collectively, every individual's situation's different, so.
Thank you.
Okay, see, no more questions from council, before we, Councilmember Rallo.
I had another for Mr. Wason, some details about the side path on High Street, it seems like a very narrow corridor, and so this is going to, okay, so, is it going to, is it going to replace that sidewalk? Is that the, is that the, there's a sidewalk on the east side of High Street, and is, the project cost is estimated $2.5 to $5 million, is that total for design, implementation, right-of-way acquisition, all of that?
So just a really quick overview on the High Street project, so that would really be a multi-use path on the east side of High Street, so where there is sidewalk, it would be replacing that existing sidewalk, and that cost, so that would be the local match that we would be using this bond fund. While leveraging, you can see about $3.4 million of additional federal funding we've received through the MPO, and those costs would include everything from design to right-of-way acquisition to construction and inspection.
And it essentially would be a monolithic path? In other words, it'll be, there won't be any separation, there's not room to separate it? Is it six or eight feet wide?
Good question, so ideally, when we start our projects, we're looking at a 10-foot-wide multi-use path, and ideally with a separation from the road as well. As the design moves forward, and we start to see property impacts and costs, that's something we'd be evaluating, but I'd start off with the assumption there will be separation in a 10-foot-wide path, recognizing there are likely some constrained scenarios and locations.
I see, because of might, the easement that we control is?
Correct, and like, there's a cemetery, there's environmental features and things that we need to be aware of as well.
Okay. All right, thanks for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, council member have any other questions? Okay, and before we go to the public, do we have amendment, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Amendment 1 to ordinance 22-13 for consideration.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved to second. Can I just do a call, although it's in favor, how to?
Mr. Chair, typically, the amendment sponsor would present and then go to council question.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, two uses to zoom, wanted to do a roll call in order just to present it. Okay, would you please present, Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure, thank you. Perhaps it's worth displaying the amendment text if that's manageable. In short, this, this amendment, along with another amendment we'll consider for ordinance 2214, works to prioritize and limit the set of projects to be considered. This is based on conversations with the mayor and his team, as well as individual conversations with a number of council members. I think in part motivated by the fact that, as the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, that these bond proposals grew out of last year's budget discussion, and in particular, the request from a number of council members for more money dedicated on an annual basis for sustainable transportation infrastructure specifically, in order to better align the city with our adopted plans in terms of sort of expenditures and timelines. So that context in particular helped, helped dictate the priorities identified here. I think looking at criteria and what would be prioritized, considering things on the climate front, of the potential to reduce greenhouse gas emissions through mode shift within the transportation sector, again, in line with our city goals of trying to reduce the number of folks who, who take single occupancy vehicles for most trips. I think also on the equity front, looking at the potential impact in the number of users, accessibility, certainly safety considerations factored into thinking about project priorities as well. I think as a, just a general matter, if the council wants to both prioritize projects and sort of ensure to the best of its ability, the projects that it wants to see get completed or invested in are the ones that get invested in, it's prudent to reduce the total number on the, of the proposal to the sort of narrowest scope, in line with, with the, the total planned expenditure of, or issuance, rather, of $5 million. So I think as a structural matter, reducing the number of projects and prioritizing them makes sense for, for the council to do. I think in terms of, within, within the, the projects that remain, and I guess I'll get to that specifically now, the, the amendment would limit the, the projects remaining on Exhibit A to four projects in the following orders. First, a construction of High Street multi-use path and intersection modernization. Second, construction of downtown ADA-compliant curb ramps. Third, the construction of various sidewalk projects throughout the city. And fourth, the conversion of citywide streetlights to LED technology. Regarding those, those projects and their timing, we recognize, of course, that it's not finish priority one and then move on to priority two, that some of these will certainly produce, sorry, proceed in tandem and/or in chronological order that's different than the ranked priority here, but still intend the list itself as, to reflect the relative importance of projects on the list. And finally, just with regards to the, the projects that were struck from the initial longer list, I want to clarify that it's not that those longer list, I want to clarify that it's not that those projects aren't worthwhile or meaningful or helpful vis-à-vis our climate action plan, comprehensive plan, transportation plan, or just general city goals of advancing equity and access. I think they're all great projects. But again, the context with which these bonds came from, the proposal in the budget conversation, budget discussion last year in 2022, as well as the types of projects and, and costs associated with some of the, some of the items that were struck from the priority list, I think are perhaps better suited for consideration under the general fund, possibly under categories outlined in the mayor's local income tax proposal, as well as maybe other funding mechanisms, for instance, guaranteed energy savings contracts for energy efficiency improvements or other mechanisms the city has at its disposal besides general obligation bonds. And I think that's adequate presentation and summary for me. I'd invite my co-sponsor, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith, to share anything she'd like, and would welcome, of course, questions, but also response and questions or feedback from the administration.
Thank you. I don't really have anything to add. I think Councilmember Flaherty summed it up well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to council members. If you have any questions of the sponsors. Before we do that, I think it's customary that we always ask staff their position or input on the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Thank you for the request. I think just two points. Number one, absolutely comfortable with the council determining priorities in this way. It's what you asked us to give you, and we welcome that. The second point I just make is, to the extent, we tried to provide a list that, that gave cushion, just in case a project dropped out for whatever reason or was funded a different way, et cetera. So if, typically in the past, I'm getting into legal territory, but typically in the past, our bond ordinances were a little more general, and if one project fell out, we could replace it with another consistent with the legal language. This is more specific than usual. So if that's one reason to think about whether we make sure we have enough projects that we're confident will be used, but we're very comfortable with your adjusting the priorities and appreciate your consideration of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions from council members of the sponsors? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just not as fast off the chair. Beth K. Corporation Council, one thing I would add to the mayor's remarks is actually the way the bond ordinances are written. If there are excess bond funds, that is, if you've finished projects. Okay, yeah, okay, okay. In my mind, I'm a lot taller than I am actually in real life.
Me too.
There you go. All I wanted to say is in the bond ordinances, if there were excess funds at the end of completing projects that were on the list, then for the Geo Public Works Bond, it says that excess funds can be used, otherwise used as permitted by law, and any excess parks bond funding would go into a designated fund for parks. So I just wanted to point that out in the sense that it is, the ordinances, as written as the mayor rightly notes, refer a lot to the projects that are on the list that you ultimately approve, and that for the case of the Parks District Bonds, the Board of Parks Commissioners would ultimately approve. But if there are funds left over, then there's the opportunity to use those funds in other ways.
Thank you.
I didn't know, is that for me?
Okay. Councilmember Scambler, then Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. Could you, Ms. Kate, could you go into a little more detail on that? So let's say we do have excess funds and for some reason projects drop out, and it may be used for other purposes. What is council's role in helping determine what those uses are?
Well, I mean, and I will defer also to, to the mayor and Controller Underwood on this, but I think we would come back and have conversations with council about other projects that, and there were originally longer lists of projects for both of these bonds, actually. So there are other projects that, that we could come back and discuss and say, this is where we'd like the funding to go now. And they're comparable in nature, if you will. They're under the same broad umbrella headings of what we're trying to do and accomplish with those.
So it essentially mirrored this process, more or less?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. My question actually is to the petitioner, not, not the petitioners, but the sponsors of the ordinance, the amendment, rather. Are the reasons that you've eliminated those first five projects because you wanted to maybe allocate that money more to the projects that you've prioritized below? Is this kind of an attempt to just kind of indicate to the, to the staff who have given us a pretty robust and a pretty, pretty comprehensive list of things, where you would prefer more money be invested in these priority projects? Does that make sense? What was your reasoning in eliminating those, those first few, first several projects?
I'm happy to answer. I, I think it more, it can more, a limited list that strikes some, some projects can more clearly convey a set of priorities that the council will ultimately approve, you know, by majority, as opposed to simply a rank order of nine items. I mentioned some of the, you know, logistical and other challenges with actually spending money on things in a sequential, you know, a chronological order from how they're prioritized. If, if the list is, is nine items long and simply in an, in an order that the council believes reflects its, their priorities, I think there's more flexibility for the administration, which I'm sure they would, you know, appreciate and enjoy in, in spending on any of those nine, sort of for reasons they could justify based, based on different opportunities. But it's, it's, that flexibility comes at the cost of the council being less specific in how we'd like to see the money spent. So it's that, that balance that I think we're, we're weighing as a council on what's appropriate.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yeah, just to add to that, the, the minimum and maximum amounts on the, I, number two in the amendment, the items that remain are the same, except that the minimum amount for sidewalks was increased from $300,000 to $500,000. So other than that, the amounts have remained the same. So if, if you notice, the original list of projects, the amount was way above $5 million, which was the amount of bond funds.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council on Amendment 1? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public. And I'll remind everyone, this is for ordinance 20, 22-13, Amendment 1. And for those of you that are on Zoom, we will remind you to use the raised hand function in Zoom to indicate your desire to speak. You may also reach us through star nine or six nine? Star nine? Okay, it's been a while, couldn't remember. Nine or six nine? Nine. I'm talking, Stephen.
I believe it's, let me, let me double check on that. It has been a while.
Okay, thank you. At any rate, when we get you the number, you can reach us that way through your mobile device, or you can reach us through the chat function on Zoom to indicate that you would like to be recognized. Okay? And we will first go to the public. Is there anyone in chambers who wish to publicly comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to Mrs. Lacy.
There are no takers in Zoom either.
And I'll just note, for, for any folks that have called in, this is just folks that have dialed in. You can dial star nine to raise your hand in Zoom.
Thank you. I had that memorized when we were doing Zoom meetings. It's been a while, it seems. Okay, thank you. We will now return to council for any final comments of the sponsors of Amendment 1 for ordinance 22-13. Okay. Councilmembers Scambler.
Yes, just thank you to the sponsors. I appreciate the work you've done to evaluate the different options and to strike the balance that you did in crafting this amendment. So thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, I'll be passing. I, I need to evaluate this a bit more, particularly the potential savings of, for instance, city building energy retrofits and swapping out hybrid cars and so forth. So I'll be passing to evaluate this further. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I will pass as well. I was generally pretty okay with what the staff had, had come up with as a list of possible projects, and I feel that this is, just gives us another thing to think about, and I'll take another week to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank the sponsors as well. I'm going to be passing, but I really like the things that I see here, so I'll just think about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, just briefly, I'll reiterate that in prioritizing projects, that, that I think a large part of this for me isn't that these other projects are not worthwhile, it's that there's better, different funding mechanisms, or that they're better suited towards a smaller general fund, you know, allocation on an annual basis from a different revenue source, that sort of thing, versus sometimes the more capital-intensive, all-at-once costs that are needed for public infrastructure, you know, to leverage MPO funds and other opportunities that I think are better suited for, again, sustainable transportation infrastructure, which in my recollection and view was, was really the motivation for these bonds per the budgetary discussion we had last year in 2022, 2021, rather, fall of 2021, about the 2022 annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Okay, when I saw this in our packet, or actually the addendum, and it made sense, and did talk with one of the sponsors individually over phone, so it really made sense. And I, I had some questions. If in fact we eliminate certain items, do we eliminate the funds? Well, one of the things that I didn't know, but upon closer inspection, the amount of the bond, there was more listed than, than what the projects were. So as we go to a recommendation, I will vote yes, even though there's still time for us to dig more and look at more things and evaluate a little bit, but I will support. And just for your reminder, this is Amendment 1 for ordinance 22-13. And I will start on my left. I'm sorry. Do we have a do-pass recommendation?
Move do-pass. Second.
Okay, before we go any further, parliamentarian, was that proper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to our left. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Pass.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Pass.
Councilmember Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Pass.
Councilmember Scambler?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the number is 508.
503.
503. See how my mind works. Five and three is eight. I know I'm right. Okay, 503. Thank you. That was for Amendment 1. Now, we will return to ordinance 22-13, considering the amendment that we just discussed. Do we have any other questions from council on ordinance 2213 to staff? Okay, seeing none. We will now go to the public for any public comments on ordinance 22-13, considering the amendment we just passed. Again, you could use the raised hand function in Zoom to indicate your desire to publicly speak. For other mobile devices, star nine ought to reach our staff. And you may also use the chat function at the bottom of Zoom in order to indicate to us that you would like to speak. Ms. Lacy, do we have any takers?
No raised hands, and there are no chat messages.
Okay, thank you. And I can't remember if I offered the same public comment for those here in the chambers. I think I did, but seeing none. Okay, do we have a do-pass recommendation for ordinance 23-13, considering Amendment 1?
Can we have comments?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. We will now come back to final comments with staff or council members. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Thank you. Yes, I, I am very much in favor of this ordinance. I think the projects, especially as we narrowed them down with Amendment 1, if that passes on, on second reading or when we make the final decision. I think these are all really vital items for accessibility and safety in our community. I grew up living on South High Street, and I walked to elementary school and middle school along South High Street, where speeds are fast and there's a monolithic sidewalk with no separation from the traffic. Now, I survived, and lots of kids survived, but it's, it's not pleasant and it, it's not very safe. So I'm very pleased to see High Street rise to the top here, and I'll be looking forward to seeing that, that completed, hopefully. The ADA-compliant curb ramps, we've seen a lot of investment for those already downtown, and I think it's, it's vital to finish that project. And of course, we always need more sidewalks. I think several of my colleagues would probably agree that that's what we hear the most about as city council representatives, is that we need sidewalks, that we need to repair sidewalks, we need new sidewalks, and to improve safety. And as we look at the climate change crisis upon us, we really need to make, make it safe to walk and to bicycle and to leave our cars at home. We'll be talking about transit a little bit later tonight. But so those sidewalk investments as part of this bond are vital as well. And, and of course, the LED technology will be saving electricity, which is also vital in our quest to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Hopefully, more and more of the electricity can come from sources other than fossil fuels. But that's a conversation for another day. So I appreciate the mayor's administration putting together this bond proposal, and I'm going to be happy to support it.
Thank you. Any other final comments from council members? Ordinance 22-13, considering Amendment 1. Okay, seeing none right now. I, I will support this ordinance as well. There's been a few changes or realignment, if you will, based on the amendment of my colleagues. And I also heard no appreciable opposition from staff, so, which makes my job a little bit easier. But one of the things that, and we've had very good questions from my colleagues this evening, thank you. One of the things that, that I'm impressed with is that it was a way for us to, or council, along with staff, to reprioritize some of the projects. And I've heard that many of the projects, or some of them, either this bond or the other, it will include design and construction. That was one of my concerns, that we could do design and maybe not get to construction for a while. And also with reprioritizing the projects, if in fact this lit increases successful, then this is in perpetuity. So therefore, it gives this council and future councils and future mayors, or of course, Mayor Hamilton might be around forever, but future councils and future mayors an opportunity to reprioritize what it is we think is important in this city as we move forward. And so having said that, I would be happy to support this amendment this evening, and we have a do, do-pass recommendation.
Do-pass.
I think it has been.
Second.
Okay, it has been now. Been properly moved in second, we'll start to our left. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Pass.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Pass.
Councilmember Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Scambler?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and the vote is 602 for ordinance 22-13, considering Amendment 1. Thank you all very much. Now, the next item on our agenda is ordinance 22-14. This is approving the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District Bonds, Series 2022, to provide funds to finance the costs of certain capital improvements for park purposes, including costs incurred in connection with and for park purposes, including costs incurred in connection with and on account of the issuance of the bonds, all for the purpose of promoting climate change preparedness and implementing equity and quality of life improvements for all city residents. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approves the issuance of special taxing district bonds by the City of Bloomington Park District under Indiana Code 36-10-4-35, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5.8 million, for the purpose of financing longer term capital projects and investments for park purposes throughout the City of Bloomington, Indiana Park District, in order to promote climate change preparedness and implement equity and quality of life for all. Thank you. And earlier, the administration gave their presentation, and I think indicated that that was to be spoken for both bonds. But do we have other staff input? Nice. I see staff, Ms. Rosenberg. Would you care to present?
Okay, hi, I'm Beth Rosenberg, Planning Services Manager for the Planning and Transportation Department. This slide is an overview and shows the proposed priority, the priority order of the projects. The following slides and the presentation are not in priority order, but we note the priority rank on each slide. They're not in priority order in order to minimize switching speakers, just between me and Mr. Street. So. Next slide, please. Okay, so our first project here is the East Covenant protected bike lane. And this project is a recommended project in the transportation plan and in the priority bicycle facilities network. This project would design and build protected bike lanes, sidewalk accessibility improvements, and bus stop improvements along East Covenant from College Mall Road east to Claris Boulevard. The estimated cost is 2.4 to 2.88 million, and that is to design and construct the facility. This project improves connectivity and allows for people living in the, improves connectivity and access for people who are living in the area, but also for all residents traveling to and through this space. There are some major destinations on the east side and in this area that would really help improve access to those spaces. Additionally, this is the highest population density census block in the southeast side of Bloomington, where the project is located. Next. The north, this project is a North Dunn Street multi-use path. This project is a recommended project in the transportation plan and would design a multi-use path from the bypass traveling north to connect with existing multi-use path just a little south of Old State Road 37. The cost is approximately $800 to $960,000 to fund design, and the intention is to create a project that's fully designed, that we can leverage for anticipated state trails funding. It is approximately 1.5 miles long, and it's actually, the design might seem different than other design numbers you've seen, and it is challenging terrain in the area. This project would provide a separated connection for people to access the wonderful resource that is the Griffey Lake Nature Preserve. And south of the bypass is an incredibly population dense area, and there is no existing path or sidewalk to connect residents south of the bypass to Griffey. And for residents that live near it, it also allows them to travel south. It's two way. You can go north or south on a multi-use path. Next project. This is the West Second Street Protected Bike Lane. This project will construct a protected bike lane and includes other safety and accessibility improvements, including replacing and updating two signals. It runs from Walker Street to the B line. This project supports the goals of the comp plan and comprehensive plan and the goals of the transportation plan. The cost in the bond is 1.5 million dollars. This will be used to match and leverage federal funding for this project. This project is important to make a much needed connection from the B line to the existing multi-use path on West Second Street. And the existing multi-use path continues west on Second onto Bloomfield Road and over I-69, which is an over two mile connection. This is the only segment missing to get to the B line. Additionally, Monroe County is working on a project that would connect from the western edge of the Bloomfield Road multi-use path to the Carst Greenway. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Tim Street. I'm the Operations and Development Division Director for Parks. And I'm going to present the rest of the projects briefly and then be available for questions. So the first project I'm going to talk about is replacing battery, gas equipment with battery equipment for parks. Obviously, this is a much smaller amount, given some of the other projects we're seeing tonight, but fits very much in the spirit of addressing climate change. Over the last couple of years, we have invested in more battery equipment and recently demoed some new green mowers that we feel like may finally be arriving. So this amount of money would jumpstart our efforts to replace existing gas equipment that is aging out with battery equipments. The next project is replacing a section of Rogers Street sidewalk that is missing. As you can see here, this is Switch Art Park and the warehouse pictured just to the east of this missing section of sidewalk. It's approximately a 250 foot section of missing sidewalk on the east side of Rogers Street. This would help bring this sidewalk into zoning compliance, and this is actually a project that we have already had in design, and it isn't permitting currently. So it's not quite shovel ready, but it's very close. As soon as we're able to get the permits and finalize the design, this would be ready to construct. The third project that we have tonight is the Griffey Loop Dam Crossing. This is part of a project that was approved with our previous bond issue and was related to the construction that we're currently doing on the Griffey Loop Trail through our current bond issue. As you look at this map, I just want to point out that it's upside down from what you might expect, and you are looking to the south. So south is up on this map, and you can see the dam on the right side over there. So when we bid and authorized the project for constructing this part of the Griffey Loop Trail and the Causeway in the fall, we unfortunately had to do some value engineering, and one of the things we had to value engineer out was the crossing of the dam. So this is another project that is already designed. It is actually already permitted through next year. And so were we able to get funds, this is something we could quickly construct and would work in tandem, one, to alleviate a lot of the parking issues we see at Griffey on popular days. It would give people another place to park, give better access up to the dam, make the dam crossing safer, and could work obviously in tandem with any future North Dunn Street multi-use path. And then the last item we have up here is a potential Cascades Phase Six Trail. We are currently finishing up phase five construction based on funds from both the bicentennial bond and a previous parks' general obligation bond. This is obviously an area that's been much discussed and much looked at, and you know, what we're putting out here is an amount of money that we feel like would authorize both a scoping exercise through multiple city departments to look at some of the unique challenges through this area. There's utility infrastructure that's aging that would be potentially in the way or need to be replaced to to make way for an additional side path or multi-use trail. Public works and engineering both involved through the road down there and some of the issues that we face annually with that road being right along the edge of the creek. And then, of course, planning and transportation as well, as this would fulfill requirements in the transportation plan. So that amount is quite a bit higher, obviously, but we feel like that could could accomplish scoping, design, and potential construction of this approximately eight tenths of a mile connection down to Miller Showers Park. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Street and Ms. Rosenberg. All the presentations. Okay, we'll now move to council for any council questions on ordinance 22-14. Councilmember Miss Gambler?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Rosenberg, questions for you? Could you comment on the North Dunn project with the understanding that it hasn't been designed yet? Could you comment on what you anticipate phases of it might cost, either if we don't build it all at once? Is or is there anything you could share about how that process will unfold and when we will know more about those numbers?
Yes, I'll do my best, and then we might, I might request an engineer to follow up for more detailed information. Mainly, the challenge with a multi-use path on North Dunn, let's say we can look at it into two separate parts. There is a section that, if you look at the bypass as the southern boundary traveling north until you get almost even with the First Street in Blue Ridge, which I can't think of the name of it yet, that connects just north of Tamarack Trail. Yes, so just north of there. That area is relatively flat. We will have to purchase purchase property to become right of way from people, but the construction of a path and the design for that construction seems more straightforward. So if we were to phase it, we would look at creating that connection, working with parks to make that a viable connection to the Griffey Trail system and how to phase it in that regard. But that part has to involve engineered level construction ready design and purchasing right of way. And usually, those are, purchasing right of way is the difficult one to estimate offhand. And then we would consider the next phase from that point north to connect with the existing multi-use path that ends sort of at Griffey, just south of Old 37. And that is simpler in that it can be on property the city owns because we, Parks owns the land out there, but more challenging terrain wise, because if you are familiar with the Dunn Street Hill, we would want to create a path that involves switchbacks just to the west side of that hill in order to have a compliant path to connect people to the next path. So I can't answer the estimates, but I can tell you that is what we would look at in terms of phasing.
So what I'm hearing you say is two phases. I'm not hearing you say nine phases, for example.
Correct.
Okay, with the understanding it might be more, but I'm not hearing like nine or 10 phases. I'm hearing like two-ish, so.
Yes, I'm going to add a thing, but each product, like when we break it into two phases, usually a transportation project like this on its own has three phases with it. So there's the construction level design, the right of way purchase, and construction and evaluation. So not to make it then become six, but it's like each section would have those three phases with it. And I think we are very interested in looking at the entirety of the design to to know what we don't know, to find out what does it look like to build this facility and what type of costs are we looking at in terms of constructing it.
Thank you. And may I ask one follow up, or would you rather I wait?
See, no one else.
You mentioned the state trails fund dollars that we might leverage for that purpose. What is the timing of those? Is that something that we could theoretically see in a year? Is it something we might theoretically see over the next 10 years? Could you give me a sense of what that might look like?
The only sense I have is a best guess, because right now, the state has a next level trails program, and they just completed round three. We reached out to them because round three was the final round, but they have like 35, I believe it was about $35 million left still. So everyone feels very surprised, and we asked if they'll have a future phase, and they said, we can't tell you yet. We're like, okay. So we would be looking for a funding source like that, looking to see if it just seems very possible that the state is going to do that, but we don't know. So we would prefer something that would be happening within three to seven years.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thanks. I wanted to know with regard to the North Street project, North Dunn Street project, what's the status of the Griffey Loop Trail that was the subject of a previous bond? And it seemed like it was going to be rather extensive, it's going to loop Griffey, it was going to prevent erosion and so forth. What, where are we on that project, and are there impediments to completing it? Thanks.
Sure. Maybe we could go back to the slide that has the map as well. That might be helpful. So currently, we are finishing and anticipate construction finishing in the next couple months. Work on the east side of the loop. So what is on the left side of the map here, which is the crossing of the Causeway, and construction of steps up the southern slopes that will basically create a new connection of the existing south trails and the existing north trails. That work is being done through a contract that was approved with GeoBond and bicentennial bond funds combined. And as I mentioned, should be completed by July at the latest. So that creates a critical connection point over there. The other thing that we're doing is we are currently engaged with Spectrum Trail Company. Forgive me, Spectrum Trail Design, I believe is their exact name. They have come on board to work with us as well on designing some of the better fixes for where we have severe erosion, particularly on the North Shore, in recommending reroutes and creating a trail update plan. We do have some remaining funds in the bicentennial bond that we intend to then use to complete more of those fixes. So when the east side is complete in July, it won't necessarily complete all the improvements on the Griffey Loop Trail that we want to see. But we don't anticipate a lot of impediments to continuing to move forward with those, sort of as a phased approach. The major missing link right now that we have is this this west side Griffey Loop Dam Crossing, as that was value engineered out of the project in order to get it going and to get construction underway. And so this would authorize that. And I should mention, Beth mentioned phase three of the next level trail grants, and we do have this in as an application for phase three. So there is a chance that we could see funding from the state that would reduce or basically completely eliminate, if we're fully funded through the grant, this need for this funding in this bond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, then Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Thank you. More questions for Mr. Street? With regards to the replacing gas powered equipment with electric equipment, I'm just trying to get a better sense of the scale of that project and the timelines. Can you speak to maybe what percentage of overall off-road equipment has been converted to battery electric so far? And maybe an estimate of the the timeline to full replacement of that inventory based on current trends of of ability to replace?
Sure. So so far, we have not replaced any drivable equipment per se, with the exception of our B line bubble, that we call it, vehicle that goes up and down the B line. That is battery. The majority of what we've replaced to date are hand blowers, backpack blowers, one battery chainsaw. Chainsaws are still a little bit limited in what they can do on a battery, and then a number of string trimmers and things like that. So more hand equipment. We have not yet to date replaced any mowers with battery operated, but as mentioned, this picture is actually from a recent demo that we had at Switch Art Park of some green equipment in combination with ESD that we are looking at. And we feel that that technology is now arriving to the point where we're ready to try it. It's to purchase a green mower and make sure that it can stand up to the rigorous use that we want to give it before investing further in more of those. So so this money would certainly go towards advancing that. I believe we've spent $11,000 or so in the last couple of years replacing equipment. As a percentage, I'm not sure. Some of the battery equipment works really well for our applications, applications where people are packing it up, moving it from place to place, using it again. It has an opportunity to charge. It's less efficient and workable in situations like in our cemeteries where they're getting constant, constant, constant use. So we do still have a lot of gas equipment, and the plan would be, as technology continues to improve, we continue to budget this on an annual basis as well to continue phasing out. out. But this would give us a real jump in terms of being able to get an instant injection of some of this new technology.
Thank you. And a few related follow-ups, if that's okay?
Yes.
On the equipment, thank you. With regards to the handheld equipment, does your team use replacement, like, pre-charge batteries since those are more modular and able to swap in and out when a piece of equipment runs out of charge?
Yep. Generally, even like the backpack blower has a battery that will pop out. We usually have a couple of batteries for a piece of equipment. So far, really great success with those, with the technology really arriving in the last couple of years, to have longevity of use and not just have it be used for 15 or 20 minutes and then set up to charge again for the next day. So we've had good success with that.
And a final question, I think. Do you have much of a sense yet of the cost savings perhaps? I guess, A, cost comparison on the front end. So what does, you know, replacement costs look like of, let's use an example of battery electric mower versus, you know, at the quality of equipment you need versus traditional gas-powered? And then also, what is the, you know, annual cost differential in terms of maintenance and fueling?
We do, and I, you know, especially on the mowers where the costs are more significant per piece of equipment, that's something we could share. At the demo, we went over a lot of that. And generally speaking, the price of a battery mower versus a traditional gas zero-turn mower is about double right now. So rather than maybe 12,000 or 13,000, you're looking at paying 25,000 to 30,000. But with gas prices spiking, you know, the payoff rate is coming down more and more quickly on that to the point where it could pay itself off with reduced gas usage in one to two years.
Okay, thank you. And could you summarize those numbers maybe like we requested with the LED lights for the other bonds and some of those and send them to us? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Isabel Pete Month Smith. I'm sorry. Councilmember Pete Month Smith.
Thank you. So I have a question about the construction of a pathway to connect Lower Cascades to Miller Showers Park. So this is described in our materials as Cascades Project Phase Six, but it sounds exactly like Cascades Project Phase Five, which we were supposed to fund with bicentennial bonds that we passed in December 2018. So what happened?
Sure. I am not privy to all the history of how those funds were authorized and brought about, and others may want to speak to that as well. But with Phase Five, what we've engaged with is a project using both general obligation bonds and bicentennial bonds combined to basically work on installing a new trail. So there's a new quarter-mile trail that runs south from Clubhouse Drive on the west side of Cascades Creek. That project overall, with the combination of those funds, also includes the accessible boardwalk and some necessary stream bank stabilization in the area. Overall, with the bicentennial bond funds that were authorized for that, 2.1 were authorized. We've only used about 1.3 of that for the project. The remainder is not intended to be used for that at this point because of some of the challenges that were faced and some of the information that came up from the road pilot closure. And in fact, some of that helped fund some other things in bicentennial B that were authorized projects, like the Seven Line, some overages with the Seven Line. So at this point, we're calling it Phase Six just to distinguish, you know, give information of what we think it would take, based after the road pilot closure, to move that along and to distinguish that from Phase Five, which is nearing completion, and give that a separate identifiable name.
Thank you, but I'm still not clear on, so what is Phase Five and what is Phase Six?
Sure. So Phase Five, as I understand it was originally identified, was Clubhouse Drive to Miller Showers. It is now Clubhouse Drive to the current termination of that project, which is basically the spillway area in Cascades. And then a Phase Six would pick up the connection for the rest of the way with either a path or multi-use trail.
So Clubhouse Drive to the spillway is now considered Phase Five, and then from the spillway down to Miller Showers is now considered Phase Six?
Correct.
And the $3.2 million, that seems to be a solid figure, is that already designed or...?
No, it is not designed. We did consult with our consultant that designed the previous phase to go through and try to work on a cost estimate of what it would take to, one, complete a scoping exercise, multi-departmental, to make sure we're on the same page with utilities, infrastructure, things like that, that is probably in need of being addressed in that section, and to design and to construct that as sort of a high-end estimate of what we feel like that would take.
And if I, may I ask one more follow-up?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, in our transportation plan, this segment actually was supposed to be a multi-use path and not shared roadway with cars? Is that what we're looking at here?
Correct. That is what this potential Phase Six would look like. And so, you know, what we've tried to do is put into here just what we think it would take to adequately address that, to complete that as called out in the transportation plan with a path or trail.
So it would, there would be a road for cars and a trail?
Correct.
Because I thought the transportation plan called for just converting that into a bicycle and pedestrian way?
I would have to defer to maybe Beth on the transportation plan specifically, but I believe it just calls for a connection and does not specify what type of connection exactly that would be.
Okay. Ms. Rosenbarger, can you speak to that?
It does, thanks. In the transportation plan, if I want to double-check real quick, but the recommendation, the recommended facility is a multi-use path, a trail that's separated from the street is better, so that's, we would say those are both equivalent comfort facilities to a trail being better. It does not say in the transportation plan that the road should not be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, since we were talking about the swapping out of gas-powered equipment with electric, so councils, I think, anticipating a leaf blower ordinance in the future, and part of it is emissions. Concerning emissions, part of it is sound frequency and maybe regulating the time. Timing it's used, but in any case, certain sound frequencies are more irritating than others. Is this, is this part of your consideration in swapping these out, is to try to minimize that?
Absolutely. And I couldn't tell you scientifically how much quieter they are, but they are quieter, especially when you consider it's only making noise when you're actively using it and there's no idle noise anyway. But yes, certainly that is part of the overall consideration with how we use these, especially in areas, you know, Switchyard Park, where there's lots of people around. Having something quieter would definitely improve user experience.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Underwood, I have one other, just to affirm. Mr. Underwood, if, I mean, this is self-evident, I think, but this is essentially a $5.8 million bond, like the previous one, this is going to be a $33 increase on taxes, property taxes?
The $33 was combined.
Was combined? Okay.
1650 for each bonded.
1650? Oh, good. Okay. Good to know. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, before we go to public, do we have an amendment? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Amendment One to ordinance 22-14.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. Please present, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Similar motivation and reasoning with this amendment as with the previous one, especially with respect to the logic, I guess, of limiting the total number of projects on the list and reprioritizing them to reflect what I hope will be council preferences, of course, hoping the amendment passes. To summarize first, the amendment would strike the gas-powered equipment and Phase Six, Lower Cascades projects, and for the remaining five projects, would order them in the following sequence of priority. First, replace missing sidewalk on Rogers Street by Switchyard Park. Second, West Second Street modernization and protected bike lanes, Walker Street to B-line. Third, North Dunn Street multi-use path. Fourth, Covenantor Drive protected bicycle lanes. And fifth, Griffey Loop Trail Dam. I'll note that as with the other amendment, the universe of projects that remains that list still, even with minimum estimates, exceeds the total of $5 million, which is the planned amount of the issuance. I think, again, factors that led to this, these priorities are accessibility, network connectivity, and leveraging existing opportunities, the number of potential users of infrastructure, greenhouse gas reduction potential through mode shift, the safety of all road users, especially more vulnerable users like pedestrians and bicyclists, and the, I guess, geographic equity across the city and trying to distribute benefits to a variety of constituents, and then also project phasing or the priority of projects as otherwise already determined in adopted city plans, many of which contain, you know, projected timelines for, or phasing for projects. I think, again, it's not that the other projects aren't important, the ones that have been removed from this exhibit list, rather, it's about what rose to the top, using some of the factors I outlined above, from individual conversations with other council members, and sort of the origin of this bond proposal with, vis-à-vis the 2022 annual budget discussions last year, like I referenced before. So with that, I'd be happy to hear from Councilmember Pete Month Smith, my co-sponsor on this amendment as well, certainly the administration and their feedback, and answer any questions that my colleagues may have.
Once again, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, we'll ask the city staff and the mayor for their feedback.
Thank you. Same comment. We appreciate your consideration and trust your judgment about those priorities and look forward to working with you on that. And as Corporate Counsel Kate said, we, as the ordinance is written, we would respond, but we would certainly work with you. If we're not able to do all the projects, we'll work back with you, but leave the prioritization up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to council for any questions on Amendment One for ordinance 22-14. Okay, seeing none. We will go to the public for comment again on this amendment for ordinance 22-14. Those of you watching us on Zoom or joining us on Zoom, please use the raised-hand function in Zoom to indicate your desire to publicly speak, or if you're on a different mobile device, you can use star nine. That should reach us. You also might want to use the chat function at the bottom of Zoom, should any of those other two don't get you to us, to indicate your desire to comment. Ms. Lasers? No takers. Thank you. Seeing none. We'll go back to council for any final comments on Amendment One for ordinance 22-14. Councilmember Pete Month Smith, then Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, I'd just like to point out to my colleagues once again that the original priorities list was between 8.5 and 9.1 million dollars for a $5 million bond. So narrowing the list down, as this amendment does, provides greater certainty that the council's priorities will be the ones that are actually implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
I'll be passing again to consider this, but I think that the, I think that phasing out gas two-stroke engines in the city are important, and it's important for the city to lead the way on that if we are going to go forward with some kind of regulation or ordinance for private entities. And this affects people's health and it's an annoyance for people as well. And I think that this would be a lost opportunity if we were not to include that. So I'll be passing to consider it further. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other? Councils, Gember, then council person, Councilwoman Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be passing this evening. In general, I want to thank the sponsors for their work on this amendment. I think the order in terms of replacing missing sidewalk and the Second Street modernization, I think the order makes sense. I still have some pretty significant questions about the North Dunn project and what can be done to move it beyond just design. I think that area is, as was mentioned, a high-population area. I think it has been under-invested in for decades. And I think there is an opportunity to move this beyond the design phase. I need to do some more homework on that. But again, I, that is an area of, as it was mentioned, it's hard for anybody south of the bypass to get to Griffey Lake. Well, the only way for people in Blue Ridge and Matlock Heights and those areas to get south into town is by car or to take their life in their hands and play a game of Frogger trying to cross the bypass. I think there are some additional questions I have about how we can not just design that but actually start making it happen. And the three-to-seven-year time window that was mentioned as a possibility for the state trails money concerns me a little. So I think there's more work to be done on this, but I do appreciate the work of the sponsors in creating this order. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any further? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Just a brief reflection in response to comments from a few of my colleagues. First, just that I agree with the importance of some of the things they emphasized, in particular, replacing gas-powered equipment. I guess I'm curious to hear a little bit more from Mr. Street at a future point via email or otherwise. The amount of money specified in the bond, I think, was $25,000, minimum and maximum. It sounds like that's one gas, one electric mower, from what we heard earlier, if that was the replacement. If it was blowers, I'm sure that's a different number. But I think the point for me still is that that's a more appropriate opportunity in something like a new revenue source in the context of a local income tax proposal or other savings that we can generate through efficiency improvements or just reprioritization within the parks budget. So I am very interested in accelerating and really making progress on the phase-out of gas blowers, especially since it sounds like that's well-known and viable. Looking forward to more details about what's a feasible timeline, what it would take. But my feeling is that a general obligation bond is not the right tool for that particular priority. And then just briefly with regards to the Dunn Street path and balancing multiple projects, in an earlier iteration, I had considered having it below the Covenantor project but had moved it up the list, based on what we're hearing from constituents and from my colleagues. My concern, if we start looking at shifting the amount of money dedicated to different projects, is that Covenantor will be bumped, and I think that was the one that the Census Block Group has mentioned is the highest density, therefore, high connectivity potential for the folks living there. Also, as somebody who's biked on East Covenantor, which connects to a greenway west of College Mall, but to the east is a really overbuilt street with really wide expanses of pavement that make it very unsafe for both pedestrians and bicyclists. So safety, usability, those other factors I mentioned earlier, I'm worried about this project being bumped, so I just wanted to express that. And I'll, of course, be supporting the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. With apologies, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I was generally fine with the proposals as presented by the administration and within, you know, coordination with many of you who are responsible for these projects. I also appreciated the explanation that many of these projects are in here as buffers in case it is not feasible or possible to get all of these projects in any kind of order. Many times, opportunities are things that need to be taken advantage of, and sometimes these things will work out, sometimes they won't. So I will be passing on Amendment One. I also like to give an opportunity for constituents to weigh in between a committee of the whole non-binding vote and our final action on this. So I welcome any feedback from the public who may be impacted by some of these projects between here and next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. What seems to, I've been quiet and trying to think about how this, some of the bonding projects feel to me. And so there's a lot of them that have to do with, you know, bicycle riding, and I ride my bike around town, too. And, you know, I think they're all really great, but I also feel that some of the bonding perhaps needs to be maybe targeted towards our older citizens, some of our persons with disability. And I really think that these are all great projects, so, and I really think... thank my colleagues for reordering it. But I look, but I look at those as part of what projects that the cities put forward, and that concerns me a little bit, and so that's what got me thinking and just kind of being quiet here with, you know, making faces every once in a while. So I'm going to be passing, and it's not to say that this isn't great work and all, and I'm just, it's something I'm thinking about, so thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from counsel? Okay, I'll make a comment as far, this is still on Amendment One for Ordinance 22-14, and I will vote yes for this amendment. One of the joys of being in a committee is that it's non-binding, so I could change it for next week if that was the case, but I also want to indicate to staff and the folks and my colleagues that I think we're headed in the correct direction. We still have another week or so to work out some details. One other thing I'd like to hear, and I'm going to say it now, as opposed before we get to the full ordinance, I've heard a couple of things from some of the presenters about able to match and get additional funding, or perspectives of grant funding or anything. I've always been a proponent of taking a dollar bill and turning it into two or three. To me, that's what leverage means. So I'd like to hear next week, just thoughts. I mean, I know it's some prospective funding, but I'd like to know when we make those comments, well, 1.5 million, we'll use that to leverage to get another 1.5. I either want to know that, do we have an application and we expect to see that, or in our past experience, we've been successful with that, or I think, I've heard about it, and so I just, as opposed to just throwing that statement out there, I know it wasn't thrown out haphazardly, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about that next week. So any other final comments? Amendment One for Ordinance 22-14.
Move to pass?
Second.
Thank you. Been properly moved and seconded. We'll start on our right this time. Councilmember Rosenbacher. Councilmember Sandberg.
Pass.
Councilmember Scimbler.
Pass.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Pass.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo.
Pass.
And I will vote yes, and the total is due-pass recommendation total of 404. Now, moving to Ordinance 22-14, with considerations for, well, no. Just moved to, it was tied-tied, so I don't think we have a majority. Okay. Ordinance 22-14, we'll go back to counsel for questions or comments. Seeing none, we will now go to the public for any comments. First, I'd ask, is there anyone in the chamber that wish to have a public comment on Ordinance If not, to those joining us on Zoom, if you desire to speak, please use the raised hand function on Zoom. If you're on another electronic device or mobile device, you can reach us by pressing star nine, or you can use the chat function at the bottom of Zoom, if none of those other two work, to indicate your desire to publicly speak. Ms. Lacy?
No raised hands and no messages in chat.
All right. Thank you. Now, we will now move back to counsel for any final comments on Ordinance 22-14. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm, I agree with Councilmember Smith, that it's important that we think about our aging population and people with disabilities. I think some of the projects on this list will help those parts of our population. If Councilmember Smith has other ideas for projects, I'm eager to hear them.
Councilmember Scimbler.
Yes, thank you. In general, I'm very supportive of this bond issue, and I think it will allow us to address some really, take advantage of some really good opportunities to, for these projects. That said, the outcome of the amendment and whatever final form it takes is very important to me on this particular bond issue, and I need to see that sort itself out. I think the geographic distribution of projects across the city is something that I note, and I think we have an opportunity to make investments in multiple areas across the two bonds that we're going to be offering, and I'd like to see how that shakes itself out. So I'll be in conversation with folks over the next week or so on that issue, and I look forward to the discussion, so I'll be passing this evening.
Thank you. Any further final comments from counsel on Ordinance 22-14? Okay, do we have a due-pass recommendation?
Move to pass?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded, a due-pass recommendation. We'll start on our left. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Pass.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo.
Pass.
Councilmember Rosenbacher.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Pass.
Councilmember Scimbler.
Pass.
And I, again, will vote yes, and due-pass recommendation for Ordinance 22-14 is 404. Now, moving to our final item this evening is Resolution 22-09. This is resolution proposing an ordinance to modify the Monroe County Local Income Tax Rate, allocate the additional revenues to economic development, and cast votes in favor of the ordinance. Also, we have asked the mayor to attend, Jeff Underwood, Controller, and Beth Cate, Corporation Counsel. And the synopsis for that resolution is as follows. Resolution 22-09 proposes an ordinance to the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council that would impose an economic development tax rate, EDIT. The Monroe County Local Income Tax Council is the body that must approve modifications to the local income tax, and it consists of four member fiscal bodies. One, the City of Bloomington Common Council. Two, the Monroe County Council. Three, the Town of Ellisville Town Council. And four, the Town of Steinsville Town Council. This resolution would cast some percentage of the City of Bloomington votes on the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council in favor of the ordinance modifying the local income tax to impose an EDIT, depending on the votes of the individual members of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Mayor Hamilton, would you care to present?
Thank you very much. It's good to be with you again. I've spoken with each of you and with all of you at various points and at some length about the proposed ED Lit, EDIT in front of you tonight. I appreciate very much your consideration and collaboration on this really important issue to move us forward. We have followed your suggestions of the past couple of years by, in this process, beginning our work not with a particular rate, but by identifying the needs of the community and how to meet those needs, and then calculating an ED Lit local income tax rate that allows us to meet those needs. I will briefly summarize the proposal for you and the public watching, and again, hear from our Controller and our Corporate Counsel to outline basic financial and procedural points. We are proposing new revenue based on four categories, four buckets, if you will, of critical community needs. Two buckets focus on present, pressing needs for city government directly to serve our residents, public safety and essential services. Public safety needs include salary costs under the recently negotiated Fraternal Order of Police contingent contract, as well as supportive services and critical facility upgrades for fire and police. Essential service needs include clear pressures to increase support for all our other city personnel, as well as deferred and ongoing basic maintenance needs, and very real cost increases for supplies and services, as well as inexorable revenue declines in certain areas. Two of the buckets focus on meeting critical future community needs, climate change and equity and quality of life. Regarding the emergency of climate change and the need to mitigate, adapt, and develop resilience, we are proposing significant enhancements to our state-leading public transit system, as well as dedicated annual funding to implement our progressive climate action plan. Regarding equity and quality of life, we are proposing significant investments in improving access to safe and quality housing across our city, both ownership and rental, as well as helping people access good jobs and continuing traditional support for our arts and local food sectors. Finally, we are earmarking funds to help those taxpayers who may face challenges from the Lit itself, an economic equity fund to support those in need. Many of us in this administration are available tonight for questions about the extensive information we have shared about these proposals. We have gotten quite a bit of feedback along the way from you and the wider public on several matters. We have heard concerns, which we share, about the impact of the Lit on those taxpayers least able to afford increased costs. Of course, first, we highlight the economic, annual economic equity fund as a substantial cushion dedicated to that, and we do note that for seniors or others on fixed, on social security income, in Indiana and locally, there is no income tax due on social security benefits at all, so no impact from ED Lit on that fixed income source. We heard concerns about potential free or reduced fares for seniors or low-income workers using Bloomington Transit. Those options are very possible, and funding is earmarked for that purpose. We heard interest in having a separate fund for ED Lit proceeds with annual budget review and fiscal plan. We plan to do just that with a discrete fund and annual budget review. Based on feedback from counsel, we made four specific adjustments in the proposal since sharing it last month, increasing essential services in two particulars, and increasing climate action plan and economic equity fund allocations as well. Some have asked in the administration not just tighten its belt and save our way to what is needed in city government. We absolutely agree on the imperative to save and tighten belts where possible. We have been doing that intentionally, and a list online shows many steps taken, just a few examples. We replaced crews of four firefighters and a large engine with two-person crews using a commercial SUV to respond to many medical calls. Five street-sweeping vehicles have been reduced to two, doing fewer passes on city streets. We started leaf collection later in the year, cutting from two passes to one per neighborhood, encouraging also residents to compost their own leaves, saving money in leaf collection. In 2004, Bloomington had one fleet mechanic for every 45 city vehicles. Today, each fleet mechanic services 65 vehicles, doing more with less. Couple smaller modest examples, perhaps. We eliminated three executive-level city vehicles for the mayor, deputy mayor, and Parks Director are no longer using city vehicles, and as you know, City Hall continues to use an antiquated phone system, well over 20 years old, that we have not replaced, so we do tighten our belts. Beyond finding savings like these, which will continue, I will just note that the structural need for annual revenue is at a scale that would require drastic reductions in personnel and services to meet essential needs. Controller Underwood will share more details, but I'll just note that we face approximately $5 million in annual basic operating shortfalls in coming years, which is only addressable through new revenue or what I would deem unacceptable cuts in service and personnel. I'll close with two final points. First, we have the capacity, very responsibly, to make these balanced investments in our future. We are the lowest of all our neighbor counties in our Lit rate, and we are very nearly the lowest of all our 20 peer Indiana cities for combined property and income tax rates. We have the capacity to make these essential investments for our future. And finally, regarding timing, we are already beginning the process to prepare the 2023 city budget, and we need to know what resources we have available for that budget. We have a contingent FOP contract that is essential to sign as soon as possible to help us retain and recruit quality police officers. And since we began discussing a Lit increase a couple of years ago, we've already seen the state legislature take steps to make it more difficult to pass a Lit. We don't know what the future may hold with this, our only substantial local ability to determine our local fiscal destiny. So I appreciate your consideration. I'm not going to repeat more than I've already said. I'm going to ask Controller Underwood, followed by Counsel Kate, to provide their updates, and then we'll, back to you. Thank you.
Good evening again. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. I seem like probably a broken record. I think if we go back to all the budget hearings that we had last year, which I'm still having flashbacks to, I think you heard Reed repeatedly say, "We're going to need additional revenues." Unfortunately, in this state, you don't control much. The one thing that you do control, that you have home rule over, is the local income tax. It accounts for 26% of the operating budgets for Parks and General Fund, the two largest operating accounts that we have. Property taxes, which are controlled by the state and not collected by the state, represent another 54% of that. So between those two taxes, that's how we fund most of the operational departments of the city. One of the things that you'll note, as the mayor said, is, and we'll pull that slide up, is that currently, we are the lowest of all our neighboring counties with a low rate of 1.345. That's broken down to 1% for certified shares and 0.25 for public safety, and the remainder goes to juvenile detention for the county, all the way up to 2.72% in Morgan County. If you would adopt this rate as proposed, that will move us to the exact middle of our neighboring counties as well, but still at a low rate of 2.2%. As the mayor said, we've got choices that we're going to have to make, and one of them is, do we get additional revenues or not? And as shown on the next slide, we've kind of done a projection over the next four years of what that might look like, and as the mayor said, you're looking at structural deficits. Now, this accounts for, if we would sign the proposed contract with the police department, is that we would run deficits of around $5 million in that budget. And that's accounting for growth in property taxes, local income tax, and miscellaneous revenues as well. Property taxes have gone up about 3.65%. The Lit's gone up about 3.25%, and miscellaneous revenues have averaged about a 3% increase over this time. Now thankfully, over time, we've been able to build up some reserves. We try to target about four months of operating in our reserves between the General Fund and the Rainy Day Fund. You graciously, as part of Recover Forward, budgeted $2 million of that, of which we utilized, but I'm happy to say, working with our department heads to cut costs, we were able to maintain at the end of 2021 a four-month reserve in that account, utilizing, even utilizing the $2 million. So, you know, you might have a different view of me asking you for revenues, but I can guarantee you, department heads, if they got up here and were to be honest with you, go, they hate to ask the Controller to spend money, and I'm constantly asking them. And I'm constantly asking them, where can they save? Or do we really need to do that? And we've got a great group of department heads that have taken that to heart and really do analyze them before they come and ask for additional monies. Is it needed? Is there ways that we can save? Are there ways that we can be more efficient? And they've done a great job of that. The pandemic, while terrible, does help us move to a more online presence, where we do things electronically versus paper. So we're constantly looking ways that we can become more efficient, but yet still provide those services to the departments. Couple other things that I do just want to put out there for you as a reminder, and we cover this every year in the budget. Of all the funds that you budgeted last year, personnel accounted for 53% of those costs. 53% of the total city budget. If we're going to run a deficit of $5 million, and you look at the General Fund and the Parks General Fund, that number jumps to 73%. We don't have a lot of disposable costs that we can get rid of, that you would be happy that we would get rid of. And those would be the forward-facing outward programs that we go to help the public with. Beyond that, then we're looking at personnel. And I don't want to sound alarmist, but it's true. We have to look at that. And the most valuable resource that we have are people. And we have increasingly seen that we're no longer able to operate like government did 20 years ago. 20 years ago, governments' benefits were by far the best that we had, that could be offered in public or private. And the benefit of longevity with it allowed us to pay a lesser amount. But everyone's caught up with us. And those benefits are equal or better than what we can do anymore. And we're seeing people get pulled away for better-paying jobs across every function inside the city. So that structural need to fund our budget, to keep good people, to be competitive, to attract the best and the brightest to come work in city government. Because there's a lot of reasons people don't want to do that anymore. It's been called the Great Exodus, is we have to have the ability to pay those people and to fund their operations. And I would ask you to approve this increase. And none of us take it lightly to ask you for that. So thank you. I'll turn it over to Beth Kate now. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening again, Corporation Counsel, Beth Kate. So again, I'll keep my remarks brief just to hit a few high points of process with respect to a lit increase and how it works. You heard earlier that the Monroe County Lit Council is composed of four member councils. Your one with nine members. The other three are the Monroe County Council with seven members, the Ellisville Town Council with five members, and the Steinsville Town Council with three members. So a lit increase must be approved by votes that constitute more than 50% of the votes held by individual members of the Monroe County Lit Council. And per state code, the council as a whole, the Lit Council, has 100 votes. And they're allocated to each member council based on relative population. The packet materials that you have and that the public has access to give the details on the calculations. But what it boils down to for you is that each of you has 6.3 votes within that 100 vote total. Okay? And what that means is that eight or nine votes from this council can pass a lit increase without requiring votes from individuals on the other councils. Something below that number would require additional votes from members of the other councils, one or more members. Okay? In terms of the process, the way that a lit ordinance arises and moves forward is that a member council would vote on a resolution. That's what you have before you, Resolution 2209, to propose an ordinance that would affect the lit, in this case proposing the Economic Development Lit that's been discussed. A public hearing has to occur. That's scheduled for April 20th. The publics receive notice of that. So have the members of the other councils. And that's all required by code. Sorry. So if the resolution is adopted, if you adopt the resolution, what happens next is that you send the resolution and the proposed ordinance and the vote total to the auditor, to the county auditor. And then the auditor distributes that to the other Lit Council members within 10 days. And then they have 30 days themselves to vote on the proposed ordinance. If there are enough votes on this council, the auditor can inform the other members of the Lit Council that they don't have to vote, because that would be enough for passage of the ordinance. Okay? So, and that's basically it. I'm happy to answer questions, but that's the general outline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to council for any questions of any of the presenters. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. I think I'll direct this to Jeff Underwood. Thank you, Ms. Kate. So just generally speaking, I appreciate the administration's couching this comparatively with other counties in terms of tax rate. But we also happen to live in a very expensive county. So people pay more here. I think we're in the top 14 counties in the state of 92, I believe, in terms of cost of living. And that includes cost of housing, of course. We're also enduring, I think today, 8.5% inflation is the official number. The bond and the tax are both regressive in their nature. We're sort of locked into that because of state statutes. So we have very little room to negotiate that. But this comes at a bad time in terms of people on fixed incomes. People are struggling right now, have little discretionary spending and so forth. So this is, it's a very tough thing for me to consider. It's not tough at all to consider increase in public safety pay. And I appreciate the administration resolving that and negotiating an increase in pay for public safety. I guess my first question would be, let's draw back further and say, some of this lit revenue is going to be directed toward employees, not only public safety, but just employees within the city. Since we're enduring this 8.5% inflation rate, are we going to keep pace commensurate with the cost CPI in terms of raises? Is that what this administration anticipates? Because I want to make sure that our employees are at least keeping pace with cost of living.
Certainly, I think the administration has shown a commitment to try and keep pay competitive. That's become more and more difficult for us in the last two years, because, you know, the wheels of government don't move quickly and our revenues get set. And what we've found is across all segments now, it started with public safety, police, and then down into fire. But we're seeing it utilities, we're seeing it parks, we're seeing it even in the clerks, is that others are responding very quickly with large pay increases, sometimes $5,000 to $10,000 a year. I don't know that we can be, because we can't pivot that quickly. But the idea is with increased revenues that that would allow us to do that. We were looking at retention bonuses. We're looking at programs that would attract people to come work for the city. Obviously, we continue to look at our benefits as well. And the other thing is to look at things like tuition reimbursement. A lot of employers do to help educate our employees. Another program that we're looking at is developing career paths within the whole of the city, not just within a department, because a lot of times, an employee will come in at a department at a low level and think, okay, I can only go two steps. Well, the idea is to show them, here is another path for you that would keep you at the city, so you don't have to leave. And here's the education and training that you need. And oh, by the way, here are programs that we will help you get those skills and keep you and educate you and make you eligible for those positions, as well as pay. I think we're in year five now of when we did the last salary study. We'll probably look at proposing another one for 2023 to see where we stand. We made substantial progress with that. We've made major changes in our hiring policies in that we no longer just look at the bottom of a range. We actually have minimum hiring ranges now. And then we look at the expertise that somebody brings to the job, as well as internal applicants as well, that we give them credit for their entire history. So it may place them higher in the salary range. We've found that to be effective. So we're looking at a number of programs to assist with that. We're looking also as well about housing issues as well. To address your point of, you know, it's a high-cost county, are there things that we can do to assist our employees or future employees with housing? So looking at workforce and low-income housing. The city's living wage that we've adopted across the city was a big jump for us, and that's helped as well. But we face numerous challenges in competing with just people within the county anymore. We're not losing people to, you know, Carmel. We're losing people to Ellisville. Utilities is an example.
So, yeah. So I appreciate all of that. And it's not unimportant. But I guess my question has to do with anticipating increases in cost of living that we can already anticipate. Are we ready to keep pace with CPI in terms of employee salaries? Otherwise, we're going to be losing ground. And yes, retention's important. And there are various reasons why people choose to stay. But ultimately, I want to make sure that city employees, this is our opportunity. This is our opportunity to keep pace. And I want to make sure that that is the first priority here.
Absolutely.
So you're prepared to say we will keep pace with CPI?
As funds allow. I mean, it depended on...
Well, as funds allow, yes.
I mean, you know, you can't pay what you don't have. And so that's why I'm saying there are...
It's a matter of prioritizing this.
Yeah. There will be difficult choices to be made between the administration and the council to keep pace with salaries, that other programs may have to be sacrificed to do that.
Okay. We'll talk further about this in the next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes. Thank you all for your presentations. I wanted to ask about more details regarding the economic equity fund, how that money will get to people for whom this new tax will be burdensome.
Sorry, let me get unstrapped here. I think the first thing I would say is that it begins, that economic equity fund, as a statement of commitment and intention to state that when we do put a tax increase in place, we are going to earmark and identify in this proposal in front of you a million dollars to do that kind of support. We don't have an exact program. We're happy to work with you on that. We're looking at things like potential individual development accounts, which can be a longstanding program used around the country to help people save, matching savings. We would look to coordinate with the Community Action Program Agency, the United Way Agency, Chapkotkins Funds. There's lots of options for that. And we're willing and very eager to look at exactly the most effective way to do it. But what we're doing with this is stating that at least this part of the tax increase would be dedicated to that purpose. And we'll do whatever works best in terms of accomplishing that.
I guess when I talk with people who are worried about their household budget because of this increase, it's hard for me to say, well, we have a million dollars and it'll help you, you know, without knowing. How is it going to help them?
Well, I would say we're considering these various programs through Community Action, supporting Community Action Program and what they do. Potential Individual Development Account could be through Township Trustee Programs, which provide direct assistance to folks. And we're kind of flexible and willing to work with you on what programs you think would be most effective. I guess I would make one other point, which is I think in the balance, looking at the impact of the balance of the proposals, many of the funds are focused on helping people lower their costs of living, from affordable housing to transit, to job skilling up and those kinds of things. So a lot of the overall investment is focusing on helping people facing income challenges to get in a better quality of life.
So if people have specific concerns or specific ideas of what would help, should they contact the mayor's office?
Happy to contact us or you, and we can share ideas. But those are some that are on the table. And again, I think it's an important statement of principle that we hear this and recognize the importance of dedicating that money. And then we're willing to work to identify a range of programs that may be most helpful.
And with this, as for all these other items, we would see more details, I assume, in the budget proposal for 2023?
Yes. And between now and then, we're happy to talk about different ideas about that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Not sure who to direct this question to. Maybe it'll be a few people that can step up and answer. In The Herald Times, there was an article, guest editorial, I guess, on March 24th, from Justin Ross and Tom Guevara. And the headline, of course, is "Bloomington Needs to Tell Its Citizens How Much Money It Has." And it goes on to say a number of things about the need to be transparent, about the need to develop a high-level strategic plan that would provide a longer view of potential opportunities and risks. And I'm certain that you've all read this. I know a lot of our constituents have, and we're getting asked questions along these lines. So what would you say to this particular guest editorial and its warnings?
I would be more than happy to respond and say, you know, we welcome that kind of input, obviously, if there's ways that we can improve. Let me say this. When the mayor came in, he appointed a fiscal task force. And they came up with, I believe, 16 items, of which we are on the process of implementing the 16th of 16. One of those was specifically what they're talking for that got stopped in 2009. I wasn't here at the time, nor was the mayor, was the certificate achievement and financial reporting. And in order to do that, you have to have generally accepted accounting principle financial statements. The state had never mandated that. We worked on a cash basis, a fund basis. And we talk about that when we present the budget, is that is a cash basis 18-month budget. Legislature, legislature, along, after hearing from bond councils and investors, said, everybody else in the world operates on GAAP financial statements. Why doesn't the state? And the legislature then began to mandate in a stepped-in process. I'm happy to report that in 2019, we complied with that and provided the first GAAP financial statements for the city. So that converted it from a fund basis to a GAAP basis. The 2020 financial statements, which we have completed, but because of the pandemic and the state changing to outside auditors, we're still in the process of finishing, finalizing that audit. As soon as that audit is final, we will be applying for certificate achievement financial reporting. And our plan is, from every year forward, is to apply for that. That gets to the heart of what they're talking about, because it provides additional information. I would say that we publish all of our cities and towns reports, which are required annually. And we post those results on the city's website. We have gone to program budgets, which we started back when I was controller initially. And they continued, and they stopped for a little while. And now we're back to fully doing program budgets, which is full disclosure. We're the only city that I'm aware of that have four nights of budget hearings specifically on the program budget format, where you get to, for four nights, dive into every program and project that the city is saying that they want to do in the coming year. That all gets published on our website as well. Once audits are complete and have been released, not only are they on the state's website, but they are on our website as well. In addition, the state established a gateway online, which if you've not gone to, I would encourage you to do so. It is a wealth of information across all units of government in Indiana. And there are multiple reports on different aspects of operations that we must file annually that's available to the public as well. So we are committed to transparency. In addition, on our website, the Transparency Web Portal, you can go in and see close to real-time data on our financial operations for every fund and every transaction in the city. So I would say that, yes, we are committed to doing those things. We continue to look at a longer-term forecast. Unfortunately, with the way we budget and weigh our revenues state, long-term financial planning has never been a strength of local units of government, including when Mr. Guevara was controller here as well. And he's aware of that. It's just difficult to project, because things are well beyond our control. But we look forward to that. We do try to project out and kind of look at, where do we... We do try to project out and kind of look at where do we think cash reserves will be based on what we know at the time. And that's all you can do. But those things that get us to, most of what is talked about in that article are either completed or in the process of being completed.
Thank you for that clarification. And I'm sure you'll agree that trust from the public is just paramount here as we're making this ask of the public. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. I'm not sure who to direct this to, but I have kind of a couple of questions that are related. You know, what we're struggling with, at least what I'm struggling with, is there's priorities in the budget. So some of these things are really essential. Some of them, we believe, are public safety. Some of them are not so essential. And so what I struggle with is if it's, you know, 18 million or whatever the price tag is, are there some of these things that we don't have to do right now, and we don't have to fund right now? I wondered, you know, in my mind, I would say, Mayor Hamilton, your administration, can you give us the top three or four priorities in each area? Can you say that to us, that these are the ones, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, they're very important, and we got to have that, you know? And I know it's challenging, and it's hard, because some of the things that have larger price tags, I look at them and I say, what it looks like to me, and I'm a layperson, right? I was a social worker and all. Some of it looks like we could fund a feasibility study for something, and some of it is the larger transit things that I'm really in favor of, but it seems like the lead time on that would be, it couldn't happen right away. So could we fund feasibility studies on that so that the total price tag of the lit is lower? And that's related, again, to can you tell us priorities? Because some things are much more essential than others. And I know that was kind of a vague set of questions, but what would you say to that?
I appreciate the questions and comments. So first, I would say, in my seat as mayor, I have to try to balance revenue opportunities and sources against community needs and challenges and opportunities. And there is no doubt that that is a balancing and complicated review of what's important now, what's important tomorrow, what's important next year, what's important in five years. And balancing the opportunities that we have to retain and do our best with our employees, to invest and support our residents, to attract and support new residents, to address challenges that we see in front of us is a big mix. Point one, that kind of balance. Point two, without question, I think, each of you and I would draw up a different picture if we were to draw exactly what we think that balance should be. And that's okay. That's democracy. And I think what I would say, from my perspective, what we have tried to present as an administration, are fundamentally important investments that all will improve the trajectory of this community, not diminish it. Yes, there are costs to it, but they are all designed to be investments that will improve this community and the people in it, help them have better opportunities. No doubt, each of you could pick a different exact assessment, and that's, I guess, what's in front of you, is to identify, as a group of nine, where do you land? I mean, we proposed one place to land, and I strongly encourage you, as I know you have been, to explore that together, because it will be better when all of us work on it than just one of us. And I look forward to working with you on that. But the list that we have given you, in my estimation, includes all investments, all of those investments will make this city better and are worth the investment, in my estimation. But I know you may have different estimations.
Well, I appreciate the way that you've opened up the process for us to debate this and debate it with each other and, you know, out in public. And I think that's really great. So, you know, thanks, and I'll be thinking about those different priorities and sending them your way. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes. Back in the pre-pandemic days, we used to have reversions from the previous year, and we'd have an appropriation ordinance to appropriate those leftover funds from the previous year. So I'd like to ask the controller, do we have reversions from 2021? And what is the plan, if we do, what is the plan to spend them?
I'm glad you asked me and not department heads. We did have reversions, and I kind of referred to that a little bit in that we had anticipated that we would be spending down our reserve levels through the plan that we presented for the 21 budget, as well as the 22. Through judicious spending and reviewing things, especially at the department head level, we were able to actually maintain the four-month reserve level at the end of 2021. So those reversions went to maintaining that balance. So we asked department heads that, you know, can we go another year and not come back and appropriate some of that money as we work through this very process, to talk about an increase in the lit, as well as what the future may hold for the cost of goods and services and personnel in the 2022 budget. The other thing that I meant to mention, as I look back through my notes, is we've been very lucky to have CARES money and ARPA funding that has helped us put forward a lot of programs, in addition to shoring up lost revenues across the organization. And those are going to run out. We've spent most of the CARES money. Most of the ARPA money was appropriated in about half of it in 2022. We appropriated about 25% in 2021, and we'd insipate for the 2023 budget. We will appropriate the remainder of that. There are very limited, you know, very limited kind of uses on how that can be done. You know, the guidance continues to get tweaked. They are getting a little bit better at it, because what they found was, it was so restrictive, units were not spending it. They were not putting the money out in the community. You know, obviously, we did. We really attempted to get the money out there. A program that I think was very successful, just that we all participated in, was the loan programs to communities that were affected downtown specifically, but across the city of Bloomington, especially in the tourism side of things, food and beverage. And we took a lot of our food and beverage money and turned those into loans that we've extended. They're low interest rates. I'm happy to report that our food and beverage tax refund monies have come back extremely strong. We've seen year-over-year growth in every one of those. The first, we just got March's numbers. So the first quarter this year is the largest quarter that we've had as a county. So we're seeing that, you know, we help people weather that storm. Not everybody made it, but most of them did, and they were in a position to be able to bounce back and provide opportunities for people when we come out, you know, a little bit of the pandemic, to get out and eat and have live entertainment. So I think we're seeing the fruits of the recover-forward actions, and the departments have been very good about watching their spending, and we were able to put that back in the reserve so that we don't have to worry about that moving forward. Because we talked about, at some point, we would want to build those back up to that four-month goal, and we're able to maintain that. So that puts us in a good footing, looking at some of these structural deficits that we may need them in future years as well.
Well, since you brought up the food and beverage tax funds, and I did see the report that came out today, we are doing well as far as those revenues, and the convention center expansion plans have been on hold for a while. Are there any expenditures on the list from the administration that could potentially, potentially, be covered with food and beverage tax funds?
I will let the mayor talk, but none that I'm aware of, because the commitment by the council at the time was that the revenues that we collect would go towards the expansion of the convention center. You certainly would have to. And in order to do those loans, we had to come back to you all as well. So we would have to revisit those requirements, and Corporation Council Kate may be able to answer that better than I, though she's, I know she's looking at me like going, I haven't looked at that legislation. So that's the short answer, is I'm not aware of any that would be particular, but we would have to revisit the commitment that the council made with those revenues.
Ms. Kate, do you have anything to add?
I always know it.
Was it a big muss?
There you go. Yeah. I actually just always look at the controller that way. That's my normal look when I sort of hear something from, no, I'm just kidding. So I'm not aware of any either, but I will double-check that. And when we come back next week, I'll be happy to answer that more fully for you. The other thing, by the way, I just wanted to mention in response to your earlier question, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith, about some of the specifics of something like the Equity Fund, is that with economic development lit, one of the statutory requirements for the revenue to flow is for there to be the adoption of a capital improvement plan. And that plan, you have, you know, sort of the outlines of that plan and what we've already provided in terms of the details of those buckets that the mayor was talking about. But additional ideas, additional sort of programmatic input would then be taken in to be reflected in a capital improvement plan. That's something that the city administration adopts, but we would review regularly, as I think the mayor said before, with council, with the public. And that would lay out what the projects are and where the revenue would be going. So-
I'm sorry, the capital improvement plan would come with the lit, or?
It's, yeah, it's required for economic development lit, for the money to actually be distributed and be received by the city and by others who receive the economic development lit. There needs to be a capital improvement plan in place. And that's at least two years long. It can be multi-year. It can be revised over time. But that is where, if there are additional ideas and input, and we would encourage that, as the mayor said, I think that can find expression in the capital improvement plan. So you'd see some more detail about how the money's going to be spent.
So in addition to the 2023 budget proposal, we will also have a capital improvement plan tied specifically to this ED lit?
Yes, specific to the ED lit, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the, a couple of the line items in Appendix B, in the public safety category, specifically the police and fire headquarters and the fire new and upgraded stations. Those categories have an annual estimate of about 2.5 million. And I wanted to ask maybe for some details about the needs there, but also a little bit more detail about the sort of funding plan. I assume there would be some sort of bond issuance backed by general fund revenues in order to invest that capital. What would the time scale be for that, or is it a combination of bonding and spending what's coming in? What does that look like?
That anticipates that we would sell bonds for a public safety building that would combine fire administration with the police department, as well as constructing a new downtown head fire station. Obviously, both, the fire, the headquarters fire station was flooded and is pretty much a complete loss. It doesn't make much sense to build back on that particular site just because of the limitations of it. And the police department, when it was both the police department and then City Hall, and the police department, again, floods frequently in the basement, so it's not ideal for that. So that 2.5 million would be an annual debt service payment for that. And you can see those, if you look back at last year's budget, and if you can't find it, we can send you, is on the PS lit capital improvement plan, there was what I call the 11th column, and that was items that weren't necessarily going to be able to be funded from public safety lit. And those were primarily replacements and refurbishments of police and fire headquarters and the stations as well.
Do you have an estimate of the time scale for that, for those bonds? So 2.5 million annual in debt service for how long?
It would probably be a 20-year bond. It would probably be next year before we could get to that. Obviously, we would want to have locations picked out and designs made so that we could have some idea of what those would be. But they'd probably be 20-year bonds.
In that estimate, it would cover both new police and fire headquarters, a downtown fire station, and other upgrades or improvements to other fire stations?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
Is this, is there more detail anywhere about those sort of capital improvement plans for those within public safety, or is this kind of the level of detail we've got?
If you look at the 10-year public safety that we present with the budget, those are fairly detailed. Now, there's, like I say, placeholders that talk about the different stations that need to be refurbished, and there's some notes about those. So right now, that's as much detail. Now, I know the chiefs have, you know, know what exactly they need to do in order to bring some of those facilities up to speed. But primarily for police and fire headquarters, we need a new facility of some kind. Yeah. Hey, look, there's a fire chief.
Thank you, Ms. Rondwood.
Good evening. Jason Moore, I'm the fire chief. He was not lying when he said that we don't like going to him to spend money. So I am telling you, when I'm in front of you now, that our needs are great. We had an engineering study done of our five existing fire stations, and it outlined that three of them were due for replacement. The flood has now added a fourth, which is now a critical need. We are operating out of a temporary facility. I thank those of you that have come by and witnessed not only the destruction of our current headquarters, but also looked at that. When you look at our needs, you have done a lot to help us. Great equipment. I can't deny that. Our firefighters can't deny that. We are now left with 20-plus-year problems that have not been addressed, that now need to be addressed. I remember talking with some of you, you know, it's unfortunate that we are the ones here now that have to look at this, because we didn't create some of these problems. But what are we going to do to stop these from going forward? I will tell you, the conditions that your firefighters live in is close to deplorable. And that is being very kind. And those of you that have come out and seen some of the living conditions, the broken tile, the, you know, stains, the mildew, the, all the issues that we've been dealing with. We have done a lot to put Band-Aids on. We have done a lot of cleaning. We've done a lot to do well with what we have, but it's not enough. When you look at that plan, we're working on a 50-year plan now, trying to figure out how do we not get into this situation again? Looking at our public state facilities, things like annexation play into this. Where are they best suited? Do we need five? Do we need four? We have other things we don't know. What we do know is with this increase right now, is that we have a critical need to replace that downtown station and the headquarters that we lost. So looking at this, looking at some of the other programs that run at public safety, I heard, you know, what could we do without, or whatever? I would also ask yourselves, is what is the cost of not doing some of these? So both police and fire, EMS, it's a private service. We saw monumental increases in run volume this past year. I think our department was somewhere around 27% increase. That has never happened. What is the cost of not putting some of these non-sworn officers on play to start dealing with some of these calls, so that our sworn officers can deal with the fires, deal with the other emergencies they need to deal with? So looking forward, I just want to say that I know that it's a lot, but I know from our side that we have to look at retaining the employees that we have. We've invested a lot in their time, energy, and training. We also have to make sure that they are in good facilities. It is hard to recruit when you bring someone by and they look at someplace they wouldn't want to live. So I encourage you to support this, and I thank you for your time. And if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief Moore.
Good evening, Council Mike Dikoff, Police Chief. We're currently in a building that's probably over 50 years old. We sustained a major flood last, I believe it was June. And we're still recovering from that. In fact, we discovered over the weekend, there's new water leaking in the basement as well. So we're stretched to the limits on our space needs. We have no place to expand the department. So we're desperately in need of a new facility. And so this money will go a long way to help us meet those needs. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell, Larry?
Yes, I have some questions related to, well, actually, first, if I could address a question to Ms. Kate regarding the capital improvement plan. I appreciate your mentioning that. Could you speak more specifically about council's role in its creation and approval?
Yeah. Statutorily, it doesn't really speak about council's involvement in it. It talks about the city executive adopting a capital improvement plan. But I think, as we've discussed before and here, back last week, I guess, we would anticipate regularly coming to council and talking through the plan, sharing it with the public as well. as well. The, the buckets and the, the details you've already seen are what we anticipate going into that plan. But just to pick up on what Councilmember Piedmont Smith had said, if there are, you know, constituent-based ideas that would make sense for one of the categories that's already been outlined, I could imagine that coming in and would encourage all of you actually to provide that input now for the initial draft of the capital improvement plan and for ongoing modifications to that plan over time. So I think we anticipate that that will be an ongoing discussion. And of course, you'll see also in the budgetary process, that's something that council has a very direct role in. So, does that help?
That does, thank you. And I believe the controller is sneaking up to the microphone as well.
Oh, no. See, this is why I look at him that way, because he just comes out of nowhere. There you go.
Well, you know, two, three new joints and less weight, I get around quicker. Yeah, we, in, in talking about the capital improvement plan, obviously, that's something that we present to you every year at the budget. So the outline that the mayor's presented is, is the basis for that and those investments. And then the details come in that annual budget process. So you see those, we specifically break out all the capital investments that we plan to make in a separate document for you to review. And it's specific, it's very specific about the project, it talks about the dollar amounts and what fund it'll get paid out of. So we anticipate in looking at that, that that process qualifies under what's required for the lit, ED portion of the lit. And we would plan to continue to do that and, and present that to you all as well, along with your feedback. And we get feedback every year on that, on those capital investments as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have some questions related to transit, but I'll wait till round two.
We are now starting round two. Yeah, great segue. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you very much. Maybe we can throw $100 in there for a sit-stand desk for council members. So I wanted to go back to the, the funds for public safety and the potential new headquarters for public safety. And I wanted to ask about kind of the, the categorization of public safety being only fire department and police department. There are other ways to look at public safety, and certainly in our community, there is some distrust of law enforcement, and many public safety calls are more a matter of something a social worker or a mental health professional might deal with. And we've had many conversations about this since 2020. So since we are looking at a big chunk of money here for a new headquarters and for public safety programming in general, I wanted to ask about the structure of public safety here in the city of Bloomington and whether there's a possibility to restructure it into, to include kind of civilian ways to address public safety.
The request which would be allowed under the lit proposal to fund a new headquarters, one of the things that would let us look at is actually bringing fire and police into the same place, same space, which they are not and have not been. And as you know, we've continued over the last several years to look at that space in public safety that is neither traditional sworn officer, police officer, nor traditional firefighter. We've added, we were doing a pilot program in the fire department with a medical response. We're doing, of course, we've added social workers and community service specialists in the police department. While we're not prepared at this moment to talk about that, I do think in the coming budget year and in the coming years after this, that question of what constitutes public safety services is a very real one. We, we, there are also community-based groups that are evaluating future policing and other such things, and I think they will all help inform how do you serve public safety in ways, including traditional policing, traditional firefighting, but others. I do think this lit proposal and the funding of new facilities will advance that significantly, the ability to pursue that. And we'll look forward to talking about that in the, in the coming budget year or two.
Yeah, thank you. And a related question, if I may?
Yes.
So there's been discussion about the, the need for new headquarters for both police and fire, but it was mentioned that the construction of the building would be a bond issue. So what would the $1 million per year under the lit heading go towards?
Oh, that's funding for the, funding for the, the bond that we would issue. Those are annual appropriations to support a bond sale that would produce cash to, to build the building and pay it off over time.
Oh, that's one of the same.
So those are the annual debt service requirements for both the police and the fire headquarters.
Oh, debt service, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campbell-Larry.
Yes, thank you. I have some questions for Mr. Connell, please. Thank you for what you've included here in transit. I appreciate hearing a little bit more about the process that led to these particular items being listed. Some of them made, oh, sorry, some of them made an enormous amount of sense to me. A maximum 30-minute frequency, I think, would increase ridership and would serve the public well. Some were less obvious to me. So for example, the East-West Transit Express line and its associated price tag. I'm wondering what, what evidence, what feedback, how did you arrive at including these different projects on here?
Sure. John Connell, General Manager, Bloomington Transit. So shortly after receiving the call from the mayor, you know, asking, you know, there may be an infusion of some local resources, what would you do with them? Sat down with the staff and we started to brainstorm and we looked at, to identify the existing deficiencies. So the first item that we identified was the lack of Sunday service. We have a large segment of our ridership, lower income, some of them work seven days a week, and that lack of service on a Sunday can be a big barrier. So we, we identified that immediately. The second deficiency that we identified was the lack of, of frequency of service, and we would like to adopt a minimum standard of 30-minute service. The timing of these discussions actually couldn't be better because Bloomington Transit, we are undertaking a strategic planning process, and we hope to get that underway in May. So these projects that are, have been submitted and presented are, first off, to, to identify and address deficiencies that we, we, we think limit the use of, of the system. And then we looked at some other, you know, bolder projects, the in-house micro-transit. You know, we recognize in order to provide mobility to everybody in the community, we're not going to be able to do it with just fixed route, traditional fixed route bus service. And that's where the micro-transit system would come into play. We would like to be able to offer mobility to everybody within the city limits. And if you're outside three-quarters of a mile off, off of a fixed route, it becomes a barrier to get to the fixed route, so you'd be eligible for micro-transit on demand. We'd also like to improve the services for the elderly and disabled. Currently, you have to schedule at least the day in advance, your trip. You know, that, that can be a burden. It cuts down on the spontaneity of, of transportation. So we'd like to be in a position where we could offer same-day service to those individuals. So that's kind of the rationale and the process that we, we adopted. You mentioned the East-West Corridor. Yeah, that's a, that's a bold project. And, you know, what we would have to do, we would like to use local money to leverage federal resources. There's a federal grant program called Small Starts that we would like to pursue. Anytime you go after large amounts of federal money, you have to be able to commit the local resources. So anytime we put together a grant application, we have to have a, submit an assurance that we have the local match to accomplish the project. And if, if you're familiar with Bus Rapid Transit, you may have seen it in other cities. Basically, what you have is fixed route transit service, high frequency, dedicated right-of-way. What we would do is scale that back. We wouldn't have dedicated right-of-way, but we'd have the high frequency of service, and we'd have the other passenger amenities, the stations, and that's kind of the concept behind that. Getting to, Councilman Smith made the comment about the feasibility study. That would definitely have to go through the process. We would submit an application, we'd have to do, you know, our homework, but it's a project we think definitely would have merit, and that's why it was added to the list.
And just to nudge a little farther, I, I don't mean to oversimplify this, but I guess I'm wondering how you concluded it had merit? Is there data that, that transit has, has gathered? Is there, is there rider feedback or customer feedback?
Well, it's, it's been successful in other cities.
Okay.
You know, one, my previous experience in transit, all of the, the most successful routes have one thing in common, high frequency of service. When the service becomes much more convenient, it becomes much more attractive, and then you, you start to entice the choice riders. And that's kind of the idea behind the program, is to create a, a high-frequency service that, you know, bidirectional, and it's, it's going to be going where people want to be. And like I said, the frequency, the high frequency is critical, and that takes additional equipment, capital equipment, the buses, and labor.
I, I agree with what you said about going where people want to be. Thank you for saying that. One of the things that struck me about the map we were provided is it, it would seem to me to make a great deal of sense to have an east-west route that went all the way to education and employment centers, and this didn't. I realize that goes outside the county. What kind of conversations have been had about, about that? I think, I think an east-west would be a lot more valuable with that. I'm wondering if we've talked?
Sure. So, so the map that was provided was conceptual in nature, you know, give an idea. Part of the strategic planning process, we, we planned to meet with all the various stakeholders in the community, this body, the, the county commissioners, the, you know, county government officials, our, obviously our passengers, the IU campus bus, there's, there's a variety of stakeholders that we want to draw into the process. But the final pattern for that type of route would be determined after we do that, we, the due diligence of determining the high-traffic generating points and, you know, where people want to go. The last thing I want to do is put any type of service on the street that's not going to be used.
Okay. Great, thank you very much, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rala.
Thank you. Perhaps Mr. Underwood again, or Mayor Hamilton, I, I didn't, well, let me, let me pose the question. So under the heading of essential city services personnel, it includes creation of new positions. And I wondered if we could have some more detail about that? Again, coming from a position of recognizing belt tightening is going to be, you know, probably implicit in the future for most people, most households, is it really a proper time to be thinking about increasing, creating new positions rather than directing, you know, the revenue toward existing compensation for existing employees? So what, what is exactly meant by creation of new positions? What do you have in mind?
Well, it's really what our department heads have in mind, and it's a process that we go through every year with department heads during both a mid-year review as well as the budget process. So we are currently soliciting that information from department heads for the 2023 budget. That, those requests are due on April the 18th, and then we vet them through an internal working group. We have them give us presentations on those. We ask very critical questions about those. We score those positions, we review the job descriptions, and if we believe that it's necessary for city services, or if there's a new program, or there's a, a lack of capacity, then those get forwarded to the mayor for his review and then getting, if approved by him, get included in the annual budget request. We take a very critical eye to that as well. We look at those and say, you know, is it, is it a, a demand for a program where the, the program has grown and are there other places that we, you know, that programs have shrunk, so there are available people to move into those roles? Are there programs that really have a need? Because it's not just personnel sometimes, it's, it's a program that goes with it. So all that gets vetted through about a three-month process before it ever gets presented to the council in August. And you know that we've been very judicious about the addition of staff, and it was only, I think, in the 2021, 20 or 21 budget that we got back up to the staffing levels that we had, not including public safety, that we had prior to the last economic downturn. So we just got up to where we were before. So it's a very vetted process. I don't have the details for you tonight, but I know that there are always those requests. And, and as the city grows, and I, I speak, you know, collectively outside of these walls, the need to provide services grows as well, and we want to be able to be poised to do that. Now, certainly, that gets vetted against the needs to compensate the existing employees that we have, because it's a limited pool. We kind of look at that in total. If, if we create a new position, that is going to take funds out of the pool that's available to spread in wage increases. So we, we take a very, very hard look at that. I can tell you, very few positions get approved every year. And that's why I'm so beloved with my fellow city department heads, along with Ms. Kate, who will get to experience that this year for the first time. Don got to do it last year for the last time. So there's dartboards with our pictures on them because most of those requests don't get approved.
Okay, just as a follow-up, one of the aims is to consolidate public safety headquarter operations. Would this, are there any hires that are related to that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. This is kind of a 30,000-foot question, and I'd like to ask it of the mayor if I could. And you and I have talked about this before. We are now finding ourselves as a council of nine going through these line by line. And as you know, as you've talked to all of us, we all have different ideas, we all have different priorities. My concern and the concern of some of my colleagues up here was when we first saw your proposal, we were looking at things we could eliminate and cut in the interests of the public and this being a, you know, big ask of our taxpaying county. Now, with more and more input from council members and their priorities, it's getting higher, right? It's what we have before us now is what's, what's the grand total?
Proposal is about $18 million a year.
Right, and it started at what, at 16, 19?
17.
17, yeah. So in the interest of fairness and trying to bring this down and trying to come to some eye, some consensus on how much we're willing to allocate in a lit, what, what did you think about the idea of limiting each of the four buckets to a certain amount? 4 million, 4 million, 3 million, 3 million, and then turn it back over to you, and you tell us what your priorities might be, given that that would be the amount that we would be more comfortable with rather than this rather large 18-million ask?
I appreciate the question. I think my answer is whatever helps this collection to achieve consensus through compromise and through articulation of your interests and goals, we will work with. If, if as a body you would like to see a, a coarser grain, a higher level of funding that would then ask us to come back in the budget process, we're certainly happy to do that. That would be very workable. If, if on the other hand, you want to have a finer-grain description, we've tried to make that possible. So from my perspective, we have tried to articulate the needs, the opportunities and challenges, and the appropriateness of investing. And I certainly think there's a range of responses that could be done from the council that we will make work. And we'll work with you to, to make anything that you come together as a consensus, a compromise, negotiations, let, let small D democracy work, we'll, we'll work with you in any, any manner that, that you suggest, including that one, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I have some mechanical sort of questions related to our consideration of the proposal, maybe following up well on what Councilmember Sandberg just asked. First of all, the proposed final action on, on the First of all, the proposed final action on the resolution from council on the April 20th, are we tied to that date for reasons of public notice or others that would be complicated to postpone or move back in time?
So just to make sure that I'm following your question, you're asking, could you continue the discussion past April 20th and still rely on the earlier notice? I mean, you would notify, obviously, the public of additional meeting. I don't believe that would be a problem. I don't think that you would run, we would run into difficulties because of the, you know, you have to have 10 days' notice at least for the public hearing. But if you are continuing discussion of the same resolution and trying to work out what the ultimate proposed ordinance would look like, I think it would rely on the earlier notice.
Okay.
In terms of, if you're going to radically change something and propose something new, then I think you probably are needing to notice, renotice. Describe if you have a brand-new resolution with a very different-looking ordinance, then I think you'd want to go ahead and start that process over again.
Okay, thank you. And I think my, I have some related follow-ups that are, yeah, directly related to this question. Mayor Hamilton, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, too, besides the legal question, which was just answered, I do think it's really important to recognize the intensity of the work to develop a budget, the intensity of the many, many weeks that we've had on this. And I do think while it may be legally certainly appropriate, possible, I do think time is quite important to let us begin the planning process. We have, we have a city government that has gone through a two-year pandemic that is trying to develop the plans to continue to get out of this and to move forward. And I appreciate the alacrity with which you might move. We'll certainly work with you, as we have intensively, to look at options, and ultimately, we hope you can find a common ground. Okay.
Thank you. So following on that, and I recognize those constraints and the desire for acting swiftly in the interest of 2023 budgeting and more, but also recognizing that reaching consensus or something very close to it on this body is not always easy, and, you know, that it may take some back and forth and extensive discussion about what's workable for eight or nine of us. To that end, changing the resolution, are there limitations on what the council can do with respect to the proposed rate of the lit? You know, other components of the resolution itself that we need to be aware of? Do things need to be originated by you, for instance, or can the council make amendments? And are there sometimes limitations, especially with fiscal issues?
I'll tell you one thing I know, and then I'm sure others may want to add. You can reduce the rate in the ordinance, and the public notice stands, it suffices. You cannot increase the rate without additional public notice. I don't, I don't know if there's more than that in terms of amendments and such.
I apologize. Could you repeat your question?
What limitations do we face as a council to amending the resolution? I was asking about a potential reduction in rate, but possibly other, I don't know, any other changes that could be anticipated to reflect council priorities, you know, consensus on a, yeah, adjusted proposal?
Yes, thank you for that. Certainly, I think the rate could be adjusted. I think the mayor may have mentioned, any increase to the rate would likely require a new additional notice and 10-day period before holding a new public hearing. Beyond that, it may depend on what sort of changes you have in mind to the resolution. If you're thinking of the use of funds, I'll say that the state statute that authorizes this tax spells out a list of permitted uses. So if you have in mind perhaps further restricting the uses, that may need to be something that's thought through. But I don't know if you have any specific change in mind, but I certainly think any increase in the rate would trigger a new additional public notice requirement.
What about the, thank you. What about the increase within certain buckets or categories to reflect council priorities, recognizing that that's just sort of a common understanding to motivate, you know, our agreement about where we're headed, and that that is not itself the capital improvement plan or the capital plan required by state statute for the lit?
Our understanding is you or we could adjust those buckets, if you will, so long as they didn't increase the aggregate amount without need, because those are not really formally part of the ordinance. So that could be done.
And final question. If a vote on the resolution failed to garner eight votes or more, are there limits on when we could reconsider a lit proposal in the future, both in terms of the total number in a year, or the timing of it, and that sort of thing?
Yes. So there is a limit statutorily on how many times a lit ordinance can go to the lit council, and it is one per year. So if, in fact, you know what? I didn't bring the statutory language. Hang on a second.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, if a vote next week on this fails, we cannot consider a lit increase again this year?
Yeah, so you can't, you can only pass one ordinance within a year involving lit, and then if there is a proposed ordinance that does not pass, another one that, whose passage would have accomplished substantially the same thing, could not be proposed again in the year. So then you're left with, as you might expect, trying to figure out, would another lit ordinance look substantially the same as the one before? So those are the constraints.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any guidance or examples on what substantially the same means in practice, or not at this time?
I mean, I don't offhand. I'm happy to take a look further into that, and we can talk more about it next week, or not even wait until next week. I can.
I'd be curious. Yeah, thank you.
I was just going to note the obvious, which is if it's a year delay, there is also a state legislative session that happens in the meantime.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, maybe just procedurally, following up on Councilmember Flaherty's question. So we're not in a position of dividing the question, then? Is that right? Because we can only vote on one ordinance? Could we divide the question into categories? In other words, or, you know, say, corresponding it with the particular increment of the tax?
I'll kind of piggyback off of the mayor's comments that the exhibits and appendices that the administration has provided for the use of the funds aren't actually part of the resolution that you all are voting on. So you're being asked to vote on a rate that will go to fund these programs, but the resolution itself doesn't specify.
Okay, that's good to know, because then my follow-up is, what assurances do we have that these funds will be directed for those specific purposes?
I think a point that we want to reiterate in listening to feedback, in meeting with all of you, is that your desire to put this into a separate fund, we investigated that with the Department of Local Government Finance. We can do that, and we plan to do that, and then you would have to appropriate those funds on an annual basis. So that is the control that you all would have.
I see. Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you for that clarity.
Can I just, I just want to publicly state as well that you have our commitment to pursue the appropriations in the plan as we present to you, as or as adjusted by you. That's our commitment, in addition to the budget process.
Yeah, and I appreciate that very much, and I don't doubt your commitment. However, this is in perpetuity, and it will extend beyond your administration, so.
I think it is important, my constitutional law wife would want me to indicate as well that while we can make commitments, and we can bond, and then they can be binding multi-year commitments through bonding, contracting, and such, none of us can commit elected officials 10 years from now how they may want to allocate this. They have the right to do it, apart from those structures where we finance through bonds or other things like that. Ask Mitch Daniels about that. He did it with the toll road, but thanks.
I guess the assurance has come to the, in terms of public, though, that we, that if we have separate appropriations for specific purposes, that increases transparency. So I think we're in agreement, so thanks.
Thank you. Glad to hear we're in agreement. And I'll ask some questions and make a few comments at the end. When we were talking about commitment and using the dollars of what we say it was, and again, I trust and believe the commitment, but I also think of Lower Cascade Phase 5, that we all thought one thing was going to happen, but it really didn't. And I know that might be a bad example, but I think that was one of the things that kind of left a, if not a bad taste, a different taste in some of our council members, and I would like to avoid that moving forward. What I'd like to hear at some time between now and next week, and we've talked about staff and how much that costs us, and we've used the term the Great Exodus, the Great Resignation, we're losing them to Ellisville, we're not competitive here, we've got a contingent contract or negotiation. I want to know how many personnel we've lost. I don't know what's a good, maybe this is April, this year. I mean, let's just, I just kind of want to know where we are. It seems to me that that personnel cost has increased and increased, not substantially and not forever, but local government has gotten bigger. But we're also losing, so I just kind of want to know where we are. I appreciate Councilmember Flaherty even speaking on a council consensus. I sure like to get there. And I think we can. And if we keep talking, I think we'll be able to do a package I think we can all live with. I hope so. I'd also like to hear other things later, a little bit more later, about the Green River Panel and where that still might fit. Is that here, or is that funded from some things we've already approved? Or I want to support, I do support climate initiatives and climate change and that sort of thing. But I am convinced that if we don't broaden our scope and make it more of a regional effort, then a lot of the things that we're going to do is just for naught. I mean, we'll like ourselves, we'll be great, because we've done all this. But outside of that scope, what do we really do? So I'm not so sure what we can do, but I do know that we can begin conversations. We can use that Green Panel Committee to extend. We've just put another position in ESD, and I think we'll utilize that for some of those same purposes. But that's what I want to hear moving forward. How do we broaden, and particularly with climate change and some of those initiatives? So, okay, I think we've gone through several rounds. We will now, if there's any more questions, will now go to the public for public comment on Resolution 2209. You can start to line up if you're here in council chambers, and we'll get to you. And I think seeing only one will allow five minutes. But before you get started, Mr. Levesque, and I'm sure you'll identify yourself, I want to remind our participants on Zoom that if you care to publicly speak, you can use the raised-hand function in Zoom, or you could use star nine for mobile devices, other mobile devices, or you could use the chat function at the bottom of Zoom in order to indicate to us or our staff that you want to publicly speak. Okay? And we're going to start here with folks here in the chamber. So if you could identify yourself, you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Bob Levesque, and I'd like to speak in favor of the local option income tax. In 2016, almost six years ago, I stood before you as president of Local 586 Firefighters Union and asked you to support the formation of Public Safety Loit. At that time, there were many questions about what exactly the funding would be for, how the funds would be allocated across county departments, and whether funds could be used for personnel costs. Those questions were all answered, and the PS Lit was passed, and I once again thank you for that. As a city firefighter, the Loit is the only option we have for large purchases for our safety and the safety of citizens in Monroe County. Since 2016, and with the support of the current administration, we've been able to upgrade all radios, purchase all brand-new apparatus, all new air packs, and upgrade other services. Let's be clear, this would not have happened without the added lit funding that you provided. This makes the community and your firefighters safer. And now, I don't speak on behalf of the firefighters anymore, but as a resident and taxpayer, 35 years of working in the government sector has taught me that we all have the obligation of shared sacrifice for the good of the communities we serve. That includes paying our fair share for central community services. There's not a program or expense that the administration has listed which I feel is unnecessary or undeserving of funding. There are programs that work for the good of the community. Further, I applaud the council for backing local law enforcement's need to substantial pay raises to attract and retain high-quality personnel. I hope the council is just as committed to city firefighters and other employees who also have an issue with burnout, retention, and pay. I'm retiring in two years, and as a 24-year career firefighter, I want to make sure that the future members of Bloomington Fire Department, Bloomington Police Department, and other city employees have the best equipment, fair competitive wages, and facilities to ensure that they continue to provide stellar service at the level we have come to expect. I would also expect that they should be compensated at the level they deserve, considering we are the sixth-largest city in Indiana. The raising of the lit accomplishes some of that and puts us in the continued right path moving forward. So I ask all members of the council to support the increase of this crucial funding mechanism and at the responsible level the administration has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy, do we have anyone on Zoom that's ready?
We do. We have a person with the screen name Christopher who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Hello and good evening, council. This is Christopher M. G., the advocacy director at the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. With regards to the local income tax increase, Resolution 2209, we sent out a survey to not only our members, but the community at large to obtain their feedback. We encourage the public to go to the chamber website to voice their opinion if they have not already done so. Tonight, I want to share the preliminary results of that survey. So far, we have had 196 participants. Just over 90% of them stated they were very to somewhat unsupportive of the proposal as currently written. When ranking each of these four expenditure investment category buckets, 60% of those respondents noted public safety is their top priority, followed by essential services with 18%. Both those areas were clearly number one and number two in the ranking. We also had 147 self-identified individuals from the business community specifically respond to the impact of such an increase would have on their organization. 83% of those respondents believed it to have a somewhat very negative impact. The additional comments had multiple individuals indicate their concern regarding homelessness issue in our community and how inflation is affecting their bottom line. Tonight, we are encouraging the council to push back on the current timeline and recommend a longer deliberation period. Please take this time to listen to your constituents on this issue. Thank you, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move to the next person at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Canada. I'm a sergeant with the Bloomington Fire Department. I'm also the union president for Local 586. And I just want to take a moment to express both some support for the lit and some concerns if action is not taken with regard to public safety. Much like the police department, we here at the fire department, we have been on a steady decline in our facilities, staffing, and morale. In the last year, we had a station that was flooded, displacing 13 firefighters, who are all still working out of temporary buildings. And as you heard, the other stations that are in desperate need of repairs or completely need to be replaced. We have also seen a steady loss in personnel, many moving to surrounding agencies offering better pay and benefits. By the end of our current contract, we will be making 16% less than a police officer first class, and we will be making less than 20.4%. first class, and we will be making less than 20.4% less than a senior police officer, at which time, during that final year, a first-class firefighter will be making less than $20 an hour. This is and will continue to be a growing problem for us to recruit and retain firefighters. And this is happening now with our most recent recruit class. We started with seven, and we're down to three already. Two of the seven cited pay that they couldn't take a pay cut to come here and work. I know much, much, much of this will be for future conversation, but I do feel like that it is not about, I do feel like that what we are talking about now, if we don't talk about it moving forward, we will all regret this in the end, and that we need to take appropriate action to plan for what we can see coming down the road. If these funds can be appropriately attained, then I would encourage you all to act on this lit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Lacy, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, next we have a person with a screen name ComHawk, who I, maybe Marty Hawk, who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Yes. Good evening, can you hear me now?
I sure can, can you identify yourself? You have five minutes.
Thank you, I'll make it much quicker than that. I just wanted to share some information for you to have full transparency regarding the tax that is in place in surrounding counties, because so many of them are using large portions of that income tax percentages for property tax replacement credits. So it's not new spending, it's reducing the property tax. For instance, in Morgan County, they use 1.002, which is more than what we have even for our certified shares. They use 1.002 for property tax replacement credit. Then we have Jackson County, who uses a half of a point for property tax replacement credit, as well as Brown County, and so, and as well as Lawrence County. So I think when somebody says to you, well, you know, we're lower than the other counties, if that's important for you to, to take into consideration, then you have to recognize that they are using a large portion to reduce their property taxes. And I just wanted to share that with you, and that information is available at the state level. Thank you. And thanks for all your hard work. I know it's a long, long time, and we've been working on this together, not always wanting the same outcome, but I appreciate your service.
Thank you for your comments. I will now move to the chambers and who's at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Rushton, and I am currently the sitting president for Ask Me Local 2487. The departments that I represent are fleet maintenance, street department, utilities, the water treatment plants, animal control, sanitation. I am here to speak on behalf of my constituents that are the city of Bloomington employees. We, the union board, have had, have not had the opportunity to delve deeply into the proposed lit increase that has been presented to you by Mayor Hamilton. There are many aspects of it that sounds like they are inevitable when it comes to the tax increases. The employees who I represent are concerned not only about the cost of the increase on their labors being taxed more, but are also concerned about the ongoing efforts to increase their salaries that have steadily incapable of keeping up with the cost of living. Considering that the union employees' salaries, depending on their classifications, are anywhere from 20 to 40% below average, depending on if you are looking at it on a nationwide average or city average. We feel that the city is inevitably going to be placed into a position where it will have to bring the average of union wage up to what the private sector is offering. It will have to in order to attract and retain qualified people to perform the labor necessary to keep the city operating in its required capacity. While we, the board members, are hesitant to support a tax increase of any kind in this delicate time and financial stress to the working families, it may be unavoidable. The members of Ask Me 2487 are dedicated to providing quality services to the city of Bloomington and to the surrounding areas with the best services that can be provided. We will continue to perform the work necessary to make sure that the city is functioning properly and has the capability for everyone to enjoy the many comforts, entertainment, and recreation available. We would like to also give out a shout to the Bloomington Police and Fire Department for their continued efforts to ensure safety and protection afforded to the city's many businesses, residents, and visitors. While they may, excuse me, while they will undoubtedly be facing salary and staffing issues of their own, we and members of Ask Me 2487 support them in all their endeavors and duties. In closing, I have been instructed by my constituents to anybody who would like to experience what they actually have to do to perform their duties, please feel free to contact us, we would gladly show you. There are many aspects of the jobs, of different facilities, that some of them are kind of dangerous, and they could really use an eye over them to see what's going on, what their capabilities are. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom queue, Ms. Lacy?
We do, next we have the person with a screen name Eric Spoonmore, who should be able to unmute and state their full name for the record.
Can you guys hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you, Eric, Mr. Spoonmore.
Right. Hi, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Eric Spoonmore, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. As my colleague Christopher M. G. mentioned earlier, the chamber has collected a significant amount of feedback from our members and from the community on this local income tax proposal. And I think it's important to note that the overwhelming majority of our members are small, locally-owned businesses and also nonprofit employers that are the same organizations that you support and patronize and that make this such a vibrant and wonderful and compassionate community. Their feedback matters, and I hope you'll take it into consideration as you think through the proposal before you tonight. So we've heard loud and clear through our survey that this income tax proposal in its current form is not supported by over 90% of respondents. We've also heard loud and clear from respondents that public safety is a top priority and that our law enforcement personnel do in fact need more resources. What concerns us about this particular proposal is that it appears to be an all-or-nothing package that puts our public safety services in harm's way should the full tax package not be accepted by at least eight members of the city council. In light of the concerns and apparent low levels of support for this tax increase, we ask that you take some more time to identify a solution to the public safety funding challenges that is not dependent on an exorbitant tax increase. A 64% increase in the income tax rate for Monroe County residents during a period of record-high inflation at rates we haven't seen in over 40 years, maybe is not the answer. Slowing this process down to focus first on public safety, which is the most fundamental role of government, should be the council's top priority. We're only asking for one and a half million additional dollars to meet the salary needs. Let's start there and figure that out first. We're talking a little over 1% of the total city budget. Let's give our police the support they deserve and prioritize them and the work they do to keep us safe. I think it's also important to say that money alone will not solve our public safety challenges as it relates to staffing, recruitment, and retention of our police officers. The support of the community also plays an extraordinarily important role in this conversation, and as elected leaders, you set an example for the rest of the community by showing our officers the appreciation, respect, and support that they need to meet the mission of keeping our community and our families safe. The Chamber of Commerce certainly supports our law enforcement officers, and we hope that you all will prioritize public safety above all else when making these important decisions on behalf of the community. So thank you very much, and really appreciate all the work and time that you all put into this. I certainly understand how grueling it can be, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Ms. Lacy?
We do, next we have Andrew Gunther, who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. My name is Andrew Gunther. I am supportive of the ideas behind the lit increase, but not exactly the timing of the proposal itself. I believe that our public safety agencies need more funding to retain officers and provide appropriate benefits, additional staff, and the necessary equipment to provide the public with the safety we need and deserve. I also believe that some of the investments under the umbrella of climate action need to be enacted, such as investments in infrastructure, our public transit system, and park services. However, I believe that the timing of this proposal is quite awful due to the economic situation so many of our constituents face daily. Between inflation and stagnant wages, your constituents are facing difficult financial decisions, and increasing their taxes at this time is unpopular among much of Monroe County. I support postponing a vote on this tax until more information can be gathered and explained to the public, but overall, I support a lit increase, just in a, hopefully, more financially stable and sound future. It is important we make any lit increase carefully, deliberately, and in collaboration with your colleagues across Monroe County. Use these upcoming months not to hurriedly pass the tax, but to work with your county colleagues to garner support and reach agreement on a number that is satisfactory to both county and city officials while not unduly burdening your residents. I believe it would be unwise, unpopular, and indefensible for the city council to unilaterally impose a tax increase on the entirety of Monroe County without any initial support from county officials. Please do what is necessary to fund our public safety departments, please do what is necessary to fund our efforts to mitigate the impacts of a changing climate, but please don't do it alone. Let's make this a county-wide endeavor, not a top-down imposition by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Ms. Lacy?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move back to council for any final comments on Resolution 22-09. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, I'll be, I'll be brief this evening. I'll be passing, I think because we have very much to sort out to develop consensus, it seems like more time would be needed for deliberation. For me, the most pressing priority is public safety, honoring the FOP contract. Police and fire headquarters, I think, is absolutely essential, making certain that city employees are sufficiently compensated in what is a difficult economic time. I don't discount that the other items are important, but this should be balanced with the potential harm for the most vulnerable in our community. So I will be working with my colleagues, and I hope that we will consider an expanded time horizon in terms of deliberation so that we can do this correctly and considerately and judiciously. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you, I may have a different statement next week, but I just want to let everyone know where I am right now. On the whole, I agree that taxes are the price of having a well-managed city by a government that is mindful, frugal, and capable of prioritizing spending for the benefit of the entire local community. When it comes to the basic essential public services, we have to have the funds to restore before we do more. In other words, the costs of maintenance and upkeep, while not always the most attention-grabbing of public services, are every bit as important as building new things, expanding projects and programs, and adding more to the infrastructure inventory. We must have the resources to repair and invest in what we have, including our hard-working employees who provide the basic essential services that our public deserves. There are many good ideas in this proposal, but with this increase in local income taxes, I find myself in a most difficult place. My priorities and the vast majority of those who've connected with me as an at-large representative include public safety and essential basic city services. If we find ourselves lacking in resources to cover these basic needs, then we truly do need to expand our revenues to provide them. The fact that we currently don't seem to have enough to cover these costs is a source of alarm for many. Why don't we? Have we not done enough to be prudent in the expansion of our infrastructure projects? Have we neglected the market pressures that are causing our employee shortages that put strains on our service delivery systems? Have we added too much too soon at the expense of the basics that all constituents expect? Many questions have come to us from a range of constituents. I was privileged to sit in as an observer during the recent FOP contract negotiation. On the whole, I was satisfied with the back-and-forth that comes with good-faith bargaining. I was impressed by the FOP team and their passion and the data presented that made their case for needing more resources in order to compete in a competitive environment for police talent. I was compelled by their arguments about what happens when the loyal core that remains are stressed to the breaking point in overtime demands and lack of downtime to recharge their professional batteries. I remain deeply concerned that we haven't yet done enough, and this latest FOP contract is merely a good start to getting back to a healthy place with adequate staffing levels and pride in the profession. And then comes the kicker. All bets are off with this negotiated contract unless the city council, at least eight of us, approve this lit increase. So there's that. Times are hard for a good many of our constituents, those on fixed incomes, those with low incomes, those with pressing medical needs who can ill afford to pay more to the government, whose promises of rebates to the most needy are often tied up in competitive grants, red tape, and bureaucracy. Times may get harder with a deepening recession, world turmoil, with costly war on the horizon, perhaps, escalating medical and food costs, transportation getting more expensive. While we try to make the case that increasing the lit will improve the lives of our city residents, we cannot ignore the fact that this decision impacts more than the residents of Bloomington. The tax is also imposed on our county colleagues. Monroe County and surrounding cities may also benefit from having extra dollars in their budgets, but at whose expense? While I am a representative of the best interests of Bloomington, I cannot help but be mindful of the costs we vote on at the expense of those we do not represent. Coordination with our county colleagues is paramount when such matters come before the Monroe County Tax Council, where we, the Bloomington Common Council, have the majority share of votes. I would feel much better about this lit increase if it had more intergovernmental unit buy-in, more consensus in Monroe County that this was a necessary step in ensuring adequate public services. While I accept that revenues are required to cover growing expenses, I find myself in a most difficult place. I will struggle with this decision, I've lost sleep over it, especially as the list of special projects and programs seems to grow beyond my comfort level, beyond what I consider prudent. Every new project we add will need revenues to maintain. We simply must restore before we do more. A larger amount for the lit increase does not sit well with me, and yet, the FOP contract must be honored. Basic essential public services must be provided. If we fail to deliver on that promise to our overburdened police officers, who can ever trust this government and its administration again, or this council? I will leave it there as I listen to more and weigh the merits of this hard choice before us. At this time, we need more thoughtfulness, we need more discussion, we need to come to a consensus, and tonight I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Chair Sims. I'll be brief, I struggle with the overall size of the package. I've heard from some constituents already, and I know that probably all of you have, and I heard from a woman who said that it will be a burden to her and her family for the additional $600. And I believe her, and I think there's other people out there. And I believe her, and I think there's other people out there that are feeling the same way. There's priorities in this package that I 100% support, and then there's some that I don't feel are so essential. So, you know, I really hope that we take the time and that individuals out in the city and in the county, send me a note, send me an email, and tell me how you feel. We heard from the Chamber of Commerce, and we heard from a few other people. We heard from, you know, people here advocating for this, and this is how the process works, and I think it's really working really well, and I think this is great. So, you know, as the package stands, I'm going to vote no. And I realize it's a straw poll, and I think that the package can come down a little bit, and we can make sure that the issues that are really priorities, we fund those, and maybe some of the other ones drop out. So, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and the presentations from staff, careful consideration from my colleagues, and all the input we've had so far from the public, and I'm sure we'll continue to have. I'm going to vote yes tonight on the recommendation to indicate my general support for the proposal. In fact, I would vote yes on this proposal as crafted. I think what I'm getting from my colleagues is that this proposal will not pass, but again, I wanted to indicate my support for it. And I just have a few comments related to that. Jeff Meese was here last week sharing an analogy about pie and how, over the decades of his business, even though the business got a lot larger, the percentages allocated to two things, like profits going to, you know, member owners, employee owners, and things like that, always stayed the same, because no matter how much, how big the business got, the company got, it was just the same proportions, right? Because the pie also got bigger. And the question was, the implication for city government was, why do we have to add? Shouldn't the same pie always be enough, even as the city grows? And I think it's a useful question, a useful exercise, and I think there's a few things that come to mind for me, maybe three categories. One is our failure to stem the causes of climate change in a reasonable timeframe over the last 30, 40 years, even though we all knew this was coming, the government, especially federal government and others, for a long, long time. We are absolutely up against the ropes. I mean, the most recent reports from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change are that, you know, the window has maybe almost passed for limiting global warming to 1.5 Celsius. We're talking on a global scale, I mean, displacement of hundreds of millions of people. The amount of death and destruction in this country we will see from climate-accelerated natural disasters is immense. We all have friends, family, people that we know who will be facing these. We can't fix this problem, obviously. We can do our part. I think we're committed to doing our part. We have been for, you know, well over a decade through a lot of plans, mayoral commitments, other things. I appreciate that, and that's something we didn't use to spend money on. It wasn't a problem before. It's more expensive to buy an electric lawnmower, twice as much, in fact, we heard from Tim Street earlier tonight. There are other things like that that are justified because of the dire situation we find ourselves in from a climate perspective. You know, we are a leader in Indiana on this issue. I think we need to continue to lead. I think it would be a failure for us not to invest meaningfully in those things. Some of that's government operations. Other things, our programs, like we heard about from Ms. Clemens just recently with the Climate Action and Resilience Committee meeting, that we are investing, you know, ARPA funds in energy efficiency measures and reducing utility costs for some of our most vulnerable residents, for nonprofit organizations who are members of the Chamber of Commerce, who we just heard from. We are directly investing in things that reduce our fossil fuel consumption and carbon footprint while helping our residents, especially those who are most vulnerable to these impacts, most vulnerable to increased costs, helping them do better. Transit is another example, of course, that's much like that. So, we didn't use to spend money on addressing the climate crisis. That's needed. It's new. We've got a lot of deferred problems, things we should have been spending money on all along and haven't. Often, when I talk to folks about Mayor Hamilton, one of the things I almost always give him credit for is doing a really good job with city operations of kind of bringing things to a sustainable place financially. I think I've invoked, you know, some examples with utilities about the sustainable replacement rate of pipe that we have, things like that. I've seen a lot of examples from his administration on this front. I think we continue to see that with the proposal for facilities that need improvement across police and fire that have compounded. It's compounding, you know, decades of problems. So, you know, in some sense, that's different or new as well. Finally, you know, some level of shifting priorities. We're looking to provide a deeper and better level of service in transit, for instance. We didn't used to have that within our allocation of the pie because we didn't prioritize it, but the values of Bloomington say that we should, you know, as adopted in our plans and goals, that we really support transit. Our colleagues up in Indianapolis passed a quarter of a percent local income tax to invest in transit. That's roughly what's proposed here for us, not quite, actually, a little bit less than that. So, it's a question of values again. Do we support transit? Do we want to invest in it? To invoke the chamber again, who was just commenting, you know, in this meeting, I'd heard from them for years that they support a direct transit investment like this. So, what's happened to that? Is that mentioned in their survey? I don't know. I'd like to talk more about it. So, those categories, you know, taking real action on climate, deferred problems that this administration frankly didn't create, as well as shifting priorities for the better, I think, investing in equitable improvements for folks who are not choice riders, to invoke the term that Mr. Connell used earlier, but folks who have to take transit and really struggle because it's not a high quality, as high of quality of service as we could provide for them. So, I think all of those things explain why new revenue is needed, along with, of course, all the explanations from the administration, that speak to the pie analogy from Mr. Meese. And to, I think to critics, I spoke with Jen Pearl from the BEDC about this, and what would be useful for councilmembers to hear, and I would say the same advice to the chamber who's, you know, sort of surveyed members. A, I'd like to see the survey and what, you know, how it was framed, what the language was used. Curious if they worked with folks who developed survey instruments to frame things neutrally. But beyond that, it's not useful just to say yes or no on something, because that's not very helpful for us as councilmembers, trying to reach a compromise level. What's important and what's not? We heard public safety, but what does that mean? What about, you know, Mr. Spoonmore was just on talking about 1.5 million in salaries, so we know that one, but what about the 2.5 million a year in debt service to support the facilities upgrades? Does the chamber support that? I don't know. What about transit? Again, they used to. Do they still? What about acting on climate change? Do they think we need to invest in that? If not us, who else is going to do it? So, greater specificity and feedback from anyone, honestly, about what is justified and what's not in your mind, about the specific items in Appendix B of this proposal. Should we invest another million a year or more in personnel, trying to pay our folks more because we know they're underpaid and underworked compared to others who are attracting them away? Should we invest in those things or not? These are the choices we're making. Again, I think on the whole, the proposal is well thought out and justified. I think there's some fundamental values questions about how well you believe in local government to do good. You know, we're kind of anchored to the status quo situation. We talk about the burden of $300 or $600 of income tax on somebody. I'm sure they'd appreciate it if we lowered tax rates, too, and gave them $300 or $600 extra a year. That could have the same kind of impact for folks. We could cut city services all day long and lower tax rates. We can do that. That could be our value system. That's not my value system as a Democrat. I believe that we can use taxes to invest, actually, in the things that need to be done for the common good, but I think that there's that dynamic here. It's easy to fall into this kind of anti-tax dynamic that just assumes all taxes are bad because of the potential to impact someone's finances, and that's not to make light of that issue. It's real. But, you know, not investing in transit also has an impact on people's finances and quality of life, people who have to take that service. So, I think that's something that needs some discussion about what our values are as nine Democrats on this council, whether or not we believe in government to invest in our people and support that. And finally, I'll just note that kind of in the interest of compromise, I've been playing with the proposal while we're up here this evening and looking at what I think is most needed and reasonable to cut, and I think the proposed rate is 0.855. In working to meet my colleagues somewhere in the middle, at the very least, I think I can come down to 0.65 and find a balance of what I think is most essential. I say all that because we are on a relatively short time scale. I know we can move back the date for voting on this ultimately and taking final action, but I think some of the pressing needs and timelines of strategic planning with transit, with facility needs and other needs with the FOP contract, with facilities and police and fire, with fiscal year '23 budgeting, all of that does encourage us to move at a reasonable pace here if possible. So, that's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scumbler.
Yes, thank you. Everything to me, or not everything, but most things to me always happen in context, and so I was thinking about this lit, this proposed lit increase in the context of the 2020 proposal we received from our mayor. And I went back and looked at some of my notes, and I find myself asking some of the same questions and reaching different answers. So, first of all, just in terms of a spending plan, is there a clear coherent plan in place, or at least are we close to one, for spending these funds? And am I confident that the elements of that plan will do two things? First of all, ensure that we're meeting our most basic obligations as city government, and for me, that means public safety and public works. And two, does it truly move the needle on those issues that are of demonstrated importance to Bloomington residents? And we've heard about climate change, and we've heard about transit for our employees. Second issue is timing, and this one, this is a stubborn question, I think, is at the right time to pass this flat tax? I looked back at my old notes, and I thought about it, and I thought, well, what is the right time to pass a tax? People are never lining, you know, I've had scores and scores of constituent meetings, but I've never had anyone say, Sue, you really need to get around to raising my taxes. So, the question becomes, is this an optimal time? Not is this a best time, not is this a good time, but is this an optimal time? Given the challenges we face, given the opportunities we have, does it make sense right now? The third question I asked myself was about process. Have we engaged in some significant collaborative conversations, both internally with the administration and to an extent with our county colleagues? And for that, I really, I want to applaud the mayor and the administration and the directors of the different departments, too. I think most of us have had dozens, if not more, conversations with each other, with individual directors, and that has been tremendously helpful. The communication from the administration, I think, was tremendously helpful as well. I am generally supportive of an increase in the local income tax. I think we have some key obligations, particularly around public safety, particularly around essential city services, that require us to do our jobs and that require us to do that. The last time we had an increase, other than PS Lit and the food and beverage tax, was, I think, and this, Mr. Underwood can help me here, but it was, I think, 30 years ago. I pay more now for a gallon of gas than I did 30 years ago. I pay more for a loaf of bread now than I did 30 years ago. Running a city, not surprisingly, does cost more than it did 30 years ago. So, I am generally supportive of a lit, like most things, the devil is in the details. I think there are additional questions we have to sort out. I think I've shared my top priorities in this. I do have some additional questions about whether specific objectives that have been listed will actually move the needle on things that are important to us, and I look forward to sorting those out in the coming weeks, or coming weeks, coming week. And I look forward to conversations with my colleagues and with the administration as that goes forward. I'm going to pass tonight, but I do thank you for your good work in laying out this lit so well.
Thank you. And it's all department heads. I was going to say, thank you all for staying, but you guys can't leave anyway. I shouldn't go there. I'm trying to get some humor here. First thing I'm going to say, and this is something no one's ever, or hadn't said tonight, but I think it could come off sounding like an excuse, and I don't want it to be, but one of the things that we have to think about and hasn't really been said is our relationship, or lack thereof, with the state legislature. A lot of things that we're talking about now as far as raising revenue has to do because they're heavy-handed up there, and it's communities like ours that are getting hamstrung in order to do certain things. I mean, I'm just going to say it. That's just the way I see it, you know, and slowly but surely, they're taking away options or squeezing options of what we can do in a municipality locally. So, if we think that's what they're going to do, then shoot ya, I might just jump to do some things so we can get ahead of the game. I'm not suggesting that right now, but I want you to understand, we have some other additional pressures. When we started talking about, actually, we've been talking about possible lit for a while, 2020, and, you know, but here lately, as we started these conversations, and I do thank the administration and all the contacts and some of the discussions with department heads, Mr. Connell, some of the other people that we've talked to, not really in-depth, but enough to get a feel for each other. If we were to vote tonight on this resolution, and it included public safety and essential services as listed in the buckets, I'd vote for it right now, because those are my priorities. Those are the things that I think we really need. I'd vote on it right now. I respect something my councilmembers just said. I don't think a whole lot about values of nine councilmembers. It's important, it's just not part of my thinking. What I tend to think more of is what common ground can we agree upon that is for the greater good of our city? Probably the same thing as values, maybe, but that's what I think about and what I look at. Inflation, cost of living, I think you all, many of you, know our income levels, the differences in our entire city. We're broad. I mean, we got some poor people here that this is going to adversely, or could adversely affect. So, I'm happy that there are some other plans in order to help mitigate some of those, and particularly for those that are less fortunate in our community. I have more concern for those that have a little bit higher income, so that they may not be eligible for some of the things, some of the services, but they're part of, when I used to work with the United Way, do some work there, three out of five families in this community are hovering around the poverty line. See, those are the folks that really, really concern me. We can help these folks. You know, up here, some folks say, well, they can afford it. What about this group here? You see, and those are the things that I think about. And, you know, we've been here long enough, so I'll just end this. I am going to say that I know it's not binding, but I am going to vote yes tonight, and even though it's not binding, I hope it indicates to the public, to everyone that's sitting here, to our administration, that there is no question that new revenue, a new revenue stream is needed. The only question to me is how much? So, I think that concludes our business. I'm so sorry. Councilmember Rosenbarker.
Thank you. I'm sorry for just popping up. Oh, yeah. I'll be brief here. I just want to say thanks to everyone who is here tonight and who has spent so much time working on this. I think, you know, this is months in the making, and I really appreciate all the staff, all the public comment we've gotten, emails, working with councilmembers, working with the mayor for a really long time, just hours and hours there. I will say I plan to vote yes on this resolution as it is. I don't think, for me, it's perfect, but I think this is a really good example of a lot of collaboration and a lot of compromise on the part of the administration and the nine of us up here. This is, I think, is pretty high-level, but I would say for the last two years, we've really, or at least I've really been focusing on feeling like we're part of a team and doing a lot of good work together, and there have been proposals that have come to us from the administration that I definitely have felt like it was surprising or shocking, or I had no input beforehand. But this is something that I really appreciate, just all the work the administration has done so far to include us, and again, also just the conversations we've had so far amongst ourselves about making something that works, and I think, hopefully, we can all keep in mind here that this isn't going to be something, if it passes, that is perfect for each and every one of us, but I think if we can really give and take here to some degree, you know, and help each other out, that this proposal is going to be really good for our city. Some councilmembers talked tonight about the importance of maintaining what we already have, and I think that's important, but I think maintenance can be looked at in different ways. ways as well. So to me, it's not about maintaining the transit system as it is. It is about maintaining a way for people to get around in a safe and convenient way, and as our city changes, that transit system needs to change, too. So to me, it's about maintaining the outcome or the goal and, like, the output of the service we provide that is the maintenance. So that changes over the years, right? We have people living in different places. We have a third of low-income people not having cars, and I just think, you know, if we can, if we can keep that 30-minute frequency from one side of town to the other, that gives people, you know, 30 more minutes, 40 more minutes to spend time at home with their families that they had to spend commuting, and I think, I think that's just as important as making sure police and fire people have, you know, safe and adequate places to sleep and headquarters. I think these are all just really important things that we need, and just because we hear from one group doesn't mean we need to discount that of the other group. Surveying chamber members is, you know, a specific portion of the population. I think if we put a survey on our transit buses, we would get another idea of what people really need, and also wonder, I wonder if that's something we could do. But it's just, we're missing out on a lot of, a lot of input, and I think we have to keep in mind that we are representing an entire city and not just those people surveyed. So, those are just kind of some high-level, high-level thoughts for me. I think we have a week to really, really work hard on this to try to make something that's passable by next week, and I'm up, I'm up for trying to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. For Resolution 2209, are we ready for a recommendation?
Move to pass.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. And for due pass on Resolution 2209, starting to my right, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Pass.
Councilmember Scimbler.
Pass.
Councilmember Smith.
How do I, how do I vote no?
Just say no.
Just say no? No.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Rada.
Pass.
And Councilmember Sims votes yes. That gives us a total of three. Pardon? Three, one, three. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Our business has concluded. We are adjourned. Thank you.